Nine o'clock, we'll call the county board meeting to order, we'll begin with the flag pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll column down.
Sure. Commissioner Benoit, here. Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Thank you.
Approve or amend the agenda?
Mr. Chair, just one item, I ask consent item number 12, it's Chris Byrd's item on the Rice Project, the Rice Road Project.
Move for approval of the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second. Most men made in this, and second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carry. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube, please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's Rules of Orders for its meetings, so please obtain the board's chair, the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segment or public hearings, however, public comment on other agendas may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair as we begin today. Please turn your phone to vibrate, thank you. Open forum. We got quite a few people in here, if you're, if you're here to discuss other items than in the, that are not subject to the public hearing, you can come up, we have Kerry Stefanicker.
Carl.
Oh Carl Stefanicker, sorry about that.
Do you need my glasses?
Morning. Honestly, this is kind of my first time ever being in front of something like this, so I was just coming because I was knowing about the dispute about the, how should I put it? The expansion and new building for the county, and I was, I liked the idea of it, and I don't know if it's, this was one of the things that was, I was supposed to sign for at that, I'm, like I said, I'm kind of learning on this, but I think it's a really great idea. I know we are, I don't quite know on the population, if it's increasing or decreasing right now in Foley, I don't know if you guys, the population is, but I view that, I know for myself, I have done, had to go into St. Cloud, into Malacca, gone to other counties to do stuff for state reasonings, like getting, going to get a motorcycle license permit, and for the knowledge tests and stuff like that, and I'm honestly, I'm hoping that when, if, and when this goes through, that some of them services, like I even had to go into St. Cloud to get a passport done, I hope that when we actually, that does go through, that we can actually expand to start doing more of the stuff that our county seat right now can't do. It's a very big benefit from the county and the people of Foley, because it's, it might not bring people in right away, but it'll, it has more room for expansion, more possibilities that we, that I myself don't know what can come, but it is for something that, expansion and something new in Foley is going to be good, and I, that's where I think this is going, what I like and what I wanted to voice my opinion on it with, is that the new building is going to give a lot of benefit to the county. I don't know, anything else that needs to be said, or? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your input.
Rick Walter?
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Rick Walter, I live at 427 Wilson Avenue Southeast, in Benton County, in the southeast part of St. Cloud. I'm a part of a group called Faith in Housing, which has been gathering monthly for the past three years to address homelessness and housing concerns primarily in the city of St. Cloud. Our group is made up of representatives from local faith communities and social service organizations, united in our shared mission to provide dignified responses to homelessness in our region. This month, we're meeting with county commissioner boards to share both the work we have done and the plans currently underway. More importantly, we're here to invite you to a regional partnership that brings together the three counties and five cities to address the ongoing need for emergency and short-term housing for people who are unsheltered. In spite of the two shelters on the east side of St. Cloud in Benton County and the Place of Hope, there were still about 25 to 30 people with serious mental illness who needed placement last winter. So from December through April, Faith in Housing organized a network of local churches to provide overnight shelter for individuals experiencing homelessness. Each site operated for a two-week stretch and relied on volunteers to transport guests in a donated van to and from the host location. At every site, we had paid staff from the Lincoln Center providing oversight. Over the course of 131 nights, we provided more than 1,400 overnight stays, supported by approximately $41,000 in community-raised donations. While this effort was a success in terms of impact, it is not a sustainable model. Although we're now in the heart of summer, winter is fast approaching. The Faith in Housing Leadership Committee has been actively working on plans for the coming season and long-term strategies that reflect our values of safety, dignity, and sustainability. Last winter, an average of 34 individuals per night still went without shelter in our area. While cities receive some CDBG funds, they have limited resources specifically earmarked for homelessness. That said, the cost of inaction is real. Police, fire, and emergency services across all five cities are already bearing the burden. We want to recognize and express our appreciation to the considerable human and capital resources that Benton County already provides in bringing critical social services to those struggling with homelessness. We come to you today seeking a collaborative approach, not just with Benton County, but with the two neighboring counties. To that end, we invite you to attend a meeting with the commissioners from the three counties and the city council members and mayors from the five area cities on Monday, August 18th, at 9:00 a.m. at Atonement Lutheran Church in St. Cloud. I'll be sending each of you an invitation with more details this afternoon. At that meeting, we will address preparation for the upcoming meeting with regard to providing safe emergency shelter and steps needed to collaborate on a shared vision from each of the cities and counties. This kind of work requires cooperation and a shared vision. We want to partner with you and the area communities to ensure we are welcoming, humane, and safe for all, especially those experiencing crisis due to homelessness, mental health issues, or economic hardship. We appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to exploring what we can accomplish together. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Which counties and which cities are on that list, do you know?
Stern, Sherburne, and Benton Counties will be there, St. Cloud, Wake Park, Sartell, Sauk Rapids, and St. Joe.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mike Lewanduski, but I think, are you for the public hearing or for this too? Okay, this is not the public hearing, the public hearing will happen later. Mary Kay Nornman.
Public hearing.
Darrell Waterkant. Chad Pop. Mike Deppa. And Frank Leggett. Okay. So that concludes the open forum then. Thank you for your comments. Consent agenda, we have items one through 12.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull number four, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull number one, please.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull seven and 11, please.
Okay.
So, right now, we have. What, one, four, seven, and 11, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of consent agenda items two, three, five, six, eight, nine, 10, and 12.
Second.
Most men made second to approve items two, three, five, six, eight, nine, and 10 and 12.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. We'll start with number one then.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to bring the members up to speed, I did have a conversation with Beth Stay and also Roxanne Ackman in regards to the minutes from the last July 15th meeting when the board discussed the fouquet plat. It was mentioned at our meeting that the Maywood Township Board approved that plat. It was, it's not correct that they approved it, they acknowledged it, and there is a difference. I did talk to the Maywood Town Board about that, and they asked for clarification, so I brought that forth in the draft minutes, had Beth put that in there, that they acknowledged it, they didn't approve it.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that, on those draft minutes, so that was for that. Do you, do you want to do these separately?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll move for approval of consent agenda item number one.
I'll second. Most men made second to approve consent agenda number one, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number four, Commissioner Heinon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at this point in time, I was not able to make that July 21st committee of the whole meeting that was discussed about with the auditor treasure, so I will be abstaining for number four.
I was, wasn't there either, I was out on vacation, so I will not vote on it, I would ask that we have, we do have a deal in there on number four on the funding part of, package of it, so.
Christine is here, if you have questions.
Okay. Right. I guess the estimated, estimated cost is fine, and we do have the, where we're at today and that, we are generating enough income to support this.
Yes, with the DMV, we can cover that. It's $36,000.
But, but I mean, are we ahead of the game from last year compared to this year?
Yes, we are quite far, about 29% ahead on the salaries used, so, so we do have, the projected income from the DMV, or the budgeted income was $250,000, the projected income for this year is $367,000.
Okay. Alright. I'll move approval of number four.
Second.
Most men made second to approve consent agenda item four.
Do a roll call.
Yeah, let's do a roll call on that one, Beth.
Commissioner Benoit.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinon.
Abstain.
Commissioner Pop.
Abstain.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Aye.
Thank you.
Carry. Move on to consent agenda number seven.
I guess this is a question for Sandy? Or Nikki. I'm just curious, this, this grant funding, is that, is there a county match for that grant funding?
No, there's not a county match.
Okay. I will move consent agenda number seven.
Second.
Then motion and second to approve consent agenda number seven, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number 11.
This one, I just have some questions, because I'm new on the board and not sure what some of this is, so if Kathleen is on the line, I'm wondering if this is a contract for services or a software lease for?
Are we on the same, I know consent agenda number 11 is Chris's final payment on.
Yes.
So which, and I'm sorry, which one were you, which item were you intending to address this, Kathleen?
I was intending to pull Kathleen's for, for the contract that she had.
M caps, number three.
Yeah.
M caps, okay. Well Kathleen is with us online, if you've got questions.
So Kathleen, is this a contract for services for M caps, or is this a software lease for IT stuff?
We can't hear her, she's talking. She's not muted either.
Yep. Ms. Shaw, maybe you can hear us, we're not able to hear Kathleen, perhaps you could prompt her to, with her audio.
I will have her come in my office.
Excellent idea.
So we do have a.
There they go.
We'll do that after, we get done with this.
Sorry, Commissioner Benoit, I missed that when we were pulling items, I thought.
I'm sorry.
Didn't catch that we didn't pull the one you were interested in.
Good morning, I'm sorry, I don't know why my volume wasn't working.
That's okay. I just, I, go ahead.
Go ahead. So this is our office case management software, this is the renewal and maintenance program. It lasts apparently for three years, of course, this is my first time dealing with it, but it, it will be renewed then for 2026 through 2028.
So this is, this is not a contract for services with them, it's just for ITs?
A software system.
A software system.
Right, Steve and I had spoke a bit ago about it, because it comes out of IT's budget, but is, is used for our case management software.
And I can add, Mr. Chair, is, this is one of several applications that we obtain through MCCC, our, it's a joint powers organization, and they go out and they negotiate the contracts for us, which is great, and plus they also get the benefit of group pricing for all the members of MCCC, so yeah, we don't have to negotiate nor again draft the contracts, it's done for us by MCCC, the Minnesota Counties Computer Cooperative, yeah.
Okay.
Been around a long time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Still need a motion for number 11 then.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions on that one, too.
Okay.
Is Chris here? Is Mr. Byrd on, he's online, okay.
I'm here online, at my desk still, so.
I just, I have a couple of questions, because this is for a final payment on, so we require bonding on each road project, correct?
Yes, they, yes, we require them to be bonded before we enter into a construction contract with them, yes.
Okay, and we hold those bonds for how long after the project is completed?
Well, until they complete all the contractual obligations, including any final paperwork that we receive. So technically, if this final payment is approved today, there's a couple of things, so we have a contract bond, and we also have retainage, so basically approving this final contractor payment today would release the last amount of retainage and release the contractor of any further obligations on the project. So by me submitting this agenda item, I'm certified that they've completed all their contractual obligations to date.
Okay, and I guess the reason that I'm asking is because I did some questioning of some contractors, and counties and cities tend to hold bonds for two years in case there's an issue with the project down the road, and I'm just thinking of 11 and 22 with that issue, because we didn't have, and now we're obligated to fix that, because there's no warranty, with, if we held on to bonding, we would have the, the funding to pay for that, once we found out that failed.
Yeah, unfortunately, on those projects, we, we already issued final payment on that one.
No, I, I, I understand that, I totally understand that, but I'm, what I'm questioning is the two-year bond hold on all projects to make sure that something doesn't arise a year after the project is completed, and then we still have the bonding amount to be able to go back and fix that without putting that to the taxpayers to fix an issue that should have been fixed by the contractor.
Yeah, I think that's going to require some more investigation. Our experience has been, if we still have some retainage withheld, it's a lot easier to get the contract to address those things under the contract. Once we have to start going into bonding, going to bonding companies, unfortunately, more often than not, we have to get attorneys involved, too, because then we're requiring the bonding company to force that contractor or another contractor to come in and complete the work. And then to do that, then you have to provide proof that there was some deficiency in their work, as if they didn't meet the spec, or some other things, and then it becomes a lot of finger pointing, and it's not a quick resolution, to say, say the least.
Okay.
Which is something we can explore, I just would not expect any quick resolution to that, on that, that road.
Okay, I, I would like to explore that further, but we can do that at a later date, and I'm wondering if when we did our road tour, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if it was Mr. Johnson or Kapinski that brought up the fact of putting signage out there by that bump on 22 and 11, has that been done?
To date, it's not been completed, but maintenance has been instructed, and they're, they're working on getting signs erected here soon.
Okay. I'll move to move 11.
Second.
Most men made second to move 11, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carry. Monte Hedley, county administrator.
Nathan from Aunt Micah is here. Legislative update.
There you go, sir.
Good, good morning, Mr. Chair members, my name is Nathan Jessen, I'm the executive director of the Minnesota Inter-County Association. So Micah is a voluntary organization of about, of 17 counties, essentially like the largest counties in Minnesota, for the most part, that aren't Hennepin or Ramsey. So it's just our job to establish connections at the Capitol, the issues that we're working on aren't county-specific issues, if it's something that's only a Benton County issue, it's not something we're working on, we work on those issues with kind of broad statewide impact that affect counties generally. We provide weekly updates at the Capitol, work at the Capitol, and then also end-of-session reports, and do work with county staff and our board members throughout the year. I did want to provide just kind of a quick, like, picture of, we do a lot of work on property taxes at Micah, so I did want to provide kind of a quick picture of like what Benton County's property taxes look like compared to the state as a whole. I would say that Benton County is somewhat unique, because they've got lots of different property types that actually line up pretty closely with the statewide average, which usually you see counties are more heavy in residential, or they're more heavy in ag land or commercial, but Benton County really does have kind of that, that broader, broader set of tax base across different tax types. So did want to talk a little bit about the omnibus tax bill that became law this past year. I would say that there are two really big pieces that happened in the tax world. Just at a high level, the state was looking at cuts across the board, taxes was no exception, and when we're looking at taxes in the, when we're looking at cuts in the tax world, that is essentially looking at cuts to aid to local governments like counties and cities. We were able to prevent any cuts to county program aid, that's, that's good for Benton, Benton County receives 3.3 million in county program aid, and receives more than other counties on average. The downside to the tax bill this year was that, under previous law, obviously, the cannabis market isn't established yet, but in 2023, the state legalized cannabis statewide, they did say, we're going to set aside 10% of cannabis, of the tax on cannabis, will go to counties, 10% to cities, but this year, with them looking to cut, they decided to repeal that, so there is not any of the gross receipts tax that would go to counties directly, as had been previously in law. There is still, for any city or county that has a local sales tax, those, those sales are still subject to sales taxes, though. I'll be back in a minute, but then want to turn over to Amber to cover transportation and capital investment.
Very good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners, my name's Amber Backus, I've been representing Micah this past year at the state legislature. The transportation bill was something that took a long time to get to, the committee chairs in the House weren't really getting along that well with themselves or with the Senate, so this was a bill that was negotiated behind closed doors, and things were compounded by the fact that the committee had a negative budget target, they had to cut $115 million in general fund money, and the upcoming biennium, and more in the out years, and that's tough in transportation, where very little of the money is general fund dollars, so about a third of the general fund dollars they had to cut. So to get there, they did a number of things, they cut Metro Transit, Greater Minnesota Transit, but they also reduced the amount of money from the sales tax on motor vehicles that was going to be dedicated for transportation purposes, as passed in the 2023 transportation package. Fortunately, they were able to offset some of those cuts by increasing the fee on electric vehicles, so in the 28 and 29 biennium, they hit to the CASA formula, the county-state aid roads, is going to be negative $8 million, it would have been a lot worse without that increase in the electric vehicle surcharge. The one bright spot amongst all the cuts is they did find some general fund dollars to put $3 million into the local government road wetland replacement program, which is a credit bank, and those credits are paid for when you're doing a road construction project on your county roads and are impacting wetlands. I should mention, I didn't include it on this slide, there was also some language to increase fees that your deputy registrar can collect for some motor vehicle and license transactions, right now, when you aren't getting fees for those, so things like a change of address when a customer comes in, or some of these services around disabled veterans who don't have to pay any license tab fees, or driver's license fees, so you will get some reimbursement when you're helping those folks at your service counter. There was a lot that didn't get in the bill, and from our perspective, that was great, there were a number of policy provisions that would have either taken control away from counties, or made it more difficult for your engineers to do their jobs, some of those things would have been changing the state aid design standards for county roads, setting statutory speed limits, taking that control away from you, that wasn't anything statewide, but there were some attempts to do that on some other county roads around the state. And there were also some provisions that could have impacted your highway budgets in terms of creating a new business mitigation account to pay for businesses who's, who are interrupted by highway construction projects, that was not enacted. One thing we were trying to do was get a delay in the state's new program regarding greenhouse gas mitigation when you're building road projects, we wanted to delay that for a year, but were not successful. And then lastly, just wanted to share some updates on a bonding bill, we weren't sure if there were, was going to be one this session, we didn't know until the special session was announced, that in fact, there would be one of $700 million. Unfortunately, the amounts for transportation were much greater than what we were anticipating, it's still, it's just a drop in the bucket compared to the overall need for county roads and bridges, but $42 million for the local road improvement program, $20 million for local bridges, and then another $5 million in general application bonds for that wetland replacement program I mentioned earlier, it's great. On the environment side, a lot of money was dedicated to drinking water and wastewater programs, so more helping your municipal partners with regard to that, but the one thing that counties will be able to take advantage of is applying for $6 million for capital assistance programs and your solid waste management, so there are some new resources there, if you have any capital projects with regard to managing your solid waste and recycling. to managing your solid waste and recycling. And with that, I will turn it over to Nancy.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Zaleski, and I do public health and human services for Micah, and it's a pleasure to be here with you this morning. I want to just start off by saying that we, along with the others organizations, county organizations, had three main priorities in health and human services, and I'm happy to say that progress was made in all three of them this year. The first one you've been hearing about forever, the SSIS system that counties wrestle with, the green screen technology. We're thrilled to say that the legislature appropriated $35 million this year for that. There's an additional $10 million that was appropriated last year for the system, and so with that, we'll be able to draw down matching federal funds. So that did happen. We also had a bill to reform the Min Choices Long-Term Care Assessment Tool for folks that their situations are not going to change from year to year at all. We can do, now do an abbreviated assessment for three years. The client can request at any time a full assessment be done, but then after those three years, we do have to continue to do the full reassessment after that. We also have language that replaces written attestation with verbal attestation to get the service started for Min Choices. Once that assessment's complete, the assessor then has to get a written attestation within 30 days. But to start this initiation, it can be done verbally. There's language that allows counties to contract with hospitals on Min Choices. We are responsible for the oversight of, of those contracts, but we're allowed to do that to try and alleviate the backup that's, that's occurred there. Couple changes, changes related to the assessor qualifications. You only need a two-year degree now rather than the four-year degree that was, that was done previously. And then counties must begin an assessment, including an estimated timeline for completion within 20 days of replay, of the request from the client. And finally, DHS has to create a DHS dashboard on assessment completions. The third item, again, has been on our list for a very long time, dealing with priority admissions and direct care and treatment. As you know, we have a, very much a shortage of mental health beds, not only at the state level, but in our communities. We did make progress this year. The Human Services Finance Bill did include $10 million in '26 and $10 million in '28 to address capacity at the Miller Building, which is at the Inoka Metropolitan Regional Treatment Center. They also put $34 million into operating expenses beginning in 2029. And finally, the bonding bill that did pass included $55 million to, to complete that facility. So to complete 50 beds or to add 50 beds in the state is a $75 million cost, and we did get that. The priority admissions review panel is extended. They have a report that's due next February. And I want to mention a couple of things that did not happen, and that is, we, as you know, we had a reprieve for those folks that are deemed mentally ill and dangerous that are waiting a bed in one state-operated facility, waiting for a bed in another. We did not have that cost. It was alleviated for the last two years. Unfortunately, that did sunset, so that's coming back to us. The estimated cost statewide is $14 million for the first biennium and 18 for the second. And then I would mention again that the, the issue of community needs still has to be addressed as well. The next item is cost shifts, and I'm going to show you this very colorful chart and just direct you, I guess, to the bottom of the chart. You can see the green is House, Senate is blue, the governor had purple, and then the conference committee result, end, end-of-session result is in the, the last column. As you know, human services had a negative spending target, so they were looking, looking for money, and there were a myriad of, of proposals that would have shifted to county property taxpayers that we were fighting all, all along. Thank you to all the commissioners and other county staff that showed up. They, they definitely heard from us. So you can see on the, on the right-hand side, the, the bottom line. What we did end up getting is, again, the sunset of that M-I-N-D is, is listed. That's the 14 million, or is it 18? It's in there somewhere. I missed it. It's, yeah, the 14 million and the 18 million in the middle of the graph. We're getting that back. Also, I would just mention that the very, there's $18 million for flat reimbursement for long-term care assessments. Currently, we are reimbursed by a random time-moment study. Senator Abler's been working on this for a while and is directing the Department of Human Services to come up with a different kind of methodology. He believes that we can find $18 million there. The other thing I would mention is there's a work group that's charged with finding service, or finding savings within the human services. Micah does have two appointments, as does AMC and MAXUS, so there are six county voices on it. And if you look at, I'm looking here, it's, it's the disability waiver, the fifth item on the, on the right there. There's a, a cost share of $89 million. That's what they, they are charging counties to find within the system. If that isn't found, then we'll be dealing with this again in a few years. So just wanted to point that out. And then the total in the bottom again is county shifts of $61 million or the 151 if we don't find those, those cost savings. In terms of the Health and Human Services Bill, I mentioned SSIS. That was a, a big win. They also extended the ability to do audio-only telehealth, and they did take over non-emergency medical transportation. The state thinks that they're going to find, sorry, the state thinks that they're going to find savings of $50 million almost in the first biennium and $100 million in the second. And then they did take unexpended grant balances. They canceled those. There was $21 million in savings for repealing the public option and $56 million in the first biennium, 91 in the second for eliminating Minnesota care for undocumented adults. I think our slides are slightly out of order, and I apologize. Something that I just wanted to mention related to public health is emergency medical services. They have been in a financial crisis, particularly in rural Minnesota, for some time, so they're trying to shore up that account. They put in fairly significant money, 27 million in the first biennium, and then seven in the second for the Office of Emergency Services. There's money for an operating adjustment and an operating deficit grant program. Non-emergency medical services, I mentioned. We counties took that over. I apologize, these are a little bit out of order. We took that over probably 10, 15 years ago. The state had previously run the non-emergency medical transportation. That's for those folks that need a ride to their doctors that are, that don't have, have the ability to do so. We took that over in the middle of the night during conference committee. It was gifted to counties. So we have, you know, set up our own system. The state has decided now that they're going to take that back, and so we will not be responsible for that any longer. In terms of public health, we did put some money into infectious disease prevention. And then last year, they did cut from public health cannabis-related prevention, education, recovery programs. They cut $5 million a year last year from us. We did partially recover that this year. We're getting $3.6 million recovered per year there. And then I would just mention that there were a myriad of Department of Health increases, and that's kind of how they came up with the money in public health. What didn't happen, I would just mention that you're all familiar with the Minnesota African, African-American Family Preservation Act. We had tried to work with them to extend the timeline for that. Currently, the state has to go online on January 1st of 2027. We don't think counties are going to be ready. Hennepin and Ramsey County are currently doing a pilot on this, and we're supposed to be learning from their experience, et cetera. There's a statewide work group that has been appointed, and they are kind of just starting, starting the process. They're supposed to have a preliminary meeting, a preliminary report in January. And so if we're not ready, we've got next year hopefully to change that. In terms of the statewide working group, we've got two Micah commissioners, Kurt Mortensen from Otter Tail, Carla Biggum from Washington, and then the other two county commissioners are Angela Conley from Hennepin and Joan Lee, Joan Lee from Polk. Couple of other things that I would mention, I already talked about the M-I-N-D, we're picking that up again. There was language at one time in the form of an amendment that would have prevented counties from contracting for case management, which is a real problem because counties do contract for that service. And so we're expecting to see that. We were able to, to convince the legislature not to deal with that this year, but we are expecting to see that conversation continue. And then I would just mention that there was a proposal from the judiciary chair in the Senate that would have established a civil commitment coordinating division within, in the office of the Attorney General. That did not happen. They determined that there was a lot of duplicative work already being done in that area. With that, I just want to mention your staff that I work closely with, work very closely with, both Sandy Shogerg and Jaclyn Litfin, and just want to mention them both as being assets, not only to your county, but to Micah and, you know, all, all counties statewide. And with that, I'd be happy to answer questions. We kind of breezed through this. We know you have a full, full agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name is Rachel Sisnojek, and I am Micah's environmental liaison at the Capitol. I'm going to keep it pretty short because while there was a lot of discussion and debate in a number of different committees whose jurisdictions touch on Micah's environment priorities, I would say ultimately, there wasn't actually a ton of real change. I think because of the divided, divided House and narrow majority in the Senate, just not a lot of shared priorities between committee chairs and between the chambers. Our big priority when it comes to environment is really around solid waste management and seeking additional resources for counties as they try to meet state mandated recycling goals, which that deadline is coming up in 2030, so just in a few years. But given just the, the overall state budget situation, there really were just low or even, you know, slightly negative targets in a lot of the relevant committees, and so obviously that has an impact on, on the ability to seek increases in funding. The exception to this was, were the legacy bills in the Clean Water Fund, which is over $300 million in funding for clean water projects as part of the Legacy Committee, and then the bonding bill. Amber just touched briefly earlier on some of the funding that was available there for, for issues related to our priorities. Another place, you know, with, with limited opportunity for additional funding around solid waste, a kind of a tack that we've taken in recent years is really around just reducing the amount of waste that's coming into the, into the waste stream and, and trying to share some of the responsibility for managing that waste with those who are producing the waste. And so last year, we, along with other counties and local governments, advocated strongly for the Packaging Waste and Cost Reduction Act, which is legislation that established a product stewardship program for packaging and paper products. That is in the early stages of implementation. There's an advisory board that's been established, and so we're tracking that, and counties are involved in, in that conversation very actively. And so this year, we tried to expand that type of approach to batteries and electronic waste, just knowing that, that there is a significant cost to counties for managing that waste. There's also additional risks when that waste, those types of products are disposed of, you know, just put in the landfill rather than through like a household hazardous waste pickup and things like that. And so we tried to get that legislation across the finish line, I think, because of the packaging bill that passed last year, and that's really landmark legislation. I think there's some interest among legislators to see that implemented a little bit more before we try to expand to other product categories. But I think that's a conversation that's going to continue in, in future years. Data centers became kind of an unexpected point of contention, and especially, you know, for, for environment purposes, the conversation around the use of water required for those projects. And lastly, there was also a lot of discussion around dealing with, with the wood waste created by the Emerald Ash Bore as that spreads across the state. Lots of conversation, you know, lots of concern from legislators, but again, with lack of funding, just really not a lot of action, action there. I do have just an overview of some of the kind of specific line items that were included in, again, the various committees and omnibus bills that we're tracking. I don't, I'm not going to go through all of those, just given, I know we want to keep things short today, but hopefully that's a helpful resource. So we have the Legacy Environment Tax Bill, as well as the standalone Data Centers Bill that passed. And that is it for me.
All right, just quickly on corrections and public safety, the majority of funding, these are positive targets that this committee got, but the majority of funding went to state agencies to kind of fill deficiency in operating adjustment requirements. There was a three-year averaging implemented in the community supervision funding formula that'll allow for some more stable and predictive funding of probation services from the state, so make you less subject to the jumps and dips that might have been there before. And if you have questions on any of this, you can always follow up with me individually afterward, if that's simpler. On some general government issues, we've been pursuing broader changes to earn sick and safe time. One change that we were able to get across the finish line is pretty minor, but under previous law, if you, you didn't have to provide documentation for using E S S T until you'd missed more than three consecutive days of work, that got bumped down to two. Paid leave, this program's coming online January 1. They reduced the premium rate cap from 1.2% to 1.1%, but right now, it's at 0.88%, so there's not a functional impact on your bottom line there. There were also some changes made to the open meeting law, and absentee ballot drop-off deadline moved back from 8:00 PM, where it moved to in 2023, back to 5:00 PM this year. Pensions, there's a probation officers and 911 telecommunications working group that they're looking at enhanced benefits. We're participating in that process along with AMC to see if there's middle ground that can be reached there. The duty disability or PTSD provision was also made more sustainable moving forward to future cases, limited to 60 months total, rather than guaranteed through age 65. The one thing that's notable here is that that's just prospective. If you're already receiving benefits from that, there's no change for, for those officers. So just really high-level picture of what's next. So far, general fund revenue has been coming in above projections but still below spending. So just the notable parts of this table just kind of show you for the state, spending is higher than revenues and continues to be through fiscal year 2029. But we do, the state does have a pretty significant structural balance after this past session of $1.9 billion. There'll be a new economic forecast that comes out in December. These numbers will change, but right now, if you look at it, the structural imbalance, if you were to put all $1.9 billion towards the future deficits, would just be 300 or a little less than 300 million. So this is kind of an ongoing issue, but it's not the, in the kind of $5 billion range that there have been some concerns about. Minnesota still also has a really robust budget reserve. There's the passage of the OBBA in, in July. It's just, it's not clear yet what the impact will be. We don't have data on that. There's some special elections taking place. They're unlikely to change the composition of the House or Senate. The legislature does return on February 17th, and at least most recently, the governors indicated any special session is unlikely before then. Did want to just briefly end with talking about our policy process. Policy committees are meeting from now through November. Our board is setting our priorities, and that's going to begin with a meeting later this month. Our board is made up of county commissioners. So, but these committees will hear ideas from experts. They'll kind of work with your committee staff and figuring out what should our priorities be? Should we, what should we change? What should we not change? That gets adopted later this month. And so just here's contact information. If you ever have questions, please don't hesitate to reach out. We're here to be a resource for you. That's all we've got.
Any questions from anybody?
No.
I'd like to just make one comment. Nathan, what I'd like to see pushed on there is, a lot of this stuff is mandated by the state, but then pushed off onto the counties. And if they're going to do that, they need to remove the mandates because as far as I'm concerned, Hennepin County and those counties have different needs than what your outlying counties do. And if, they need to remove the mandates so that we can decide what our area needs the most help on.
Thank you. I appreciate those comments. Take that back.
Hey, thanks, Nathan.
Thank you, Nathan.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good point. Good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, are you ready to move on?
Yes.
All right. So Ms. Chair, the staff report for your next agenda will be provided by Jessica Green from Northland Securities. But if I could provide just a brief overview of the agenda items that are before you today and later on HRA. And I think maybe also a little, a little bit of a commentary on some of the reporting that's occurred about the project and so on. So today's public hearing is on the financing plan, not the project. And some may be wondering, why are you having a public hearing and the project is already started? I can point to two specific dates where essentially board approval was given to start the project. The first, June 23rd of this year, board had a special meeting to award the bids, the 27 bids to the low bidders. So that was June 23rd.
So that was June 23rd. July 1st, the Board approved 27 construction contracts. Again, that was July 1st. At no point was the construction manager nor were the contractors ordered to pause. So basically, when contractors approve, that's the message to contractors, get to work, get to work. So again, no order was given to pause the work. So that explains why you see dozers moving dirt today. So again, today's action is a public hearing on the financing plan, the H R A financing plan, the redevelopment plan. I suppose ideally, Mr. Chair, the financing plan and what I call the project plan would have followed the same exact path in tandem. But as you may recall, we had to take a couple of steps before we could come here today. The first is on July 8th, we need to go to the city of Foley and get their consent to operate an H R A project within its city limits. We did that. The city granted that approval. On July 10th, we had to go to our own planning commission and ask them to review the redevelopment plan. We did that, and they, they passed a resolution signifying that they had reviewed the redevelopment plan. So we had to go through those two steps to get to here today. And so I wanted to just kind of give you that overdue if I could, and set the stage for Jessica to present the, the staff report on the redevelopment plan.
All righty.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. If I can get my stuff situated here. Okay. So the county has determined, excuse me, that it is in the best interest of the county and the residents of the county to issue H R A lease revenue bonds to finance the construction of the new county government center. In order for the H R A to utilize the full powers of Minnesota statutes 469, the governing body of the H R A, so the county board, must first establish a redevelopment project area and adopt the redevelopment plan related to that project area. Prior to the approval, the county board must hold a public hearing to allow for public comment, and that hearing, of course, is scheduled for this morning. The county's bond counsel or your bond attorney, Taft Law, has prepared that development plan that is in your packet today. The plan is drafted, of course, to satisfy the statutory requirements of 469. And in doing so, it includes various sections, plenty of details, et cetera. So with that in mind, I do not plan to read in its entirety that development plan to you. I know that you have all reviewed that information. So I'll provide a bit of a brief summary and the steps taken to date. Monty highlighted a few of them already prior to today's public hearing. These steps are, of course, required by statute prior to the adoption of the redevelopment plan. So as Monty mentioned, first, the local municipality, so the city, must take action to authorize the H R A to undertake a redevelopment project within its corporate boundaries. That did occur back on July 8th. The county's planning commission then must review the plan that occurred on July 10th. And then the H R A on July 15th requested that the county board schedule the public hearing for this morning, and of course, that occurred. From there, those public hearing notices were published in both the Benton County News and the Sauk Rapids Herald. Both of those publications fell within the necessary timelines that are required for publication for an H R A redevelopment hearing, which is not less than 10 days prior to the hearing, but not greater than 30. And those notices are also included in your packet. The findings for the redevelopment plan, in summary, that certain parcels of land within the project area would not be redeveloped without some public financial aid. And of course, here, that is the issuance of H R A lease revenue bonds. The plan for the project area, excuse me, affords maximum opportunity consistent with the needs of the locality as a whole and conforms with the general plan for development of the locality as a whole. And finally, that the project is necessary to maintain core public services that are consistent with the county and the H R A's goals and objectives. Following the public hearing, the county board does have a resolution for consideration later this morning, after the close of the hearing, of course, to adopt the redevelopment plan. So big picture, today, the public hearing again is on the redevelopment plan itself. It is not taking any action related to the issuance of bonds. The bonds are scheduled to be sold later this month. So again, we're looking for public comment related to the plan itself. While the redevelopment plan does facilitate the issuance of bonds, that's not what the plan itself is discussing. So with that, I'm going to conclude my comments there. That being said, I am happy to dive into that redevelopment plan if you do have specific questions about process and any of the steps taken to date or steps to occur in the future as well.
Any questions?
Thank you.
So we've heard, before we opened the public hearing, we heard from county staff and we heard from staff reports. And the applicant is present, which is the county. We'll now open the public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address the county board on this agenda, then please come to the podium, state your name and address so that we can get it on the record. Anybody wishes to come to speak before the board for or against this?
Good morning. Mike Levendeski, Alberta County. Think it's safe to say without the approval of this development plan, the project would not go forward or would not have gone forward. So today's hearing is pretty important because the plan has to be established. I don't know, I guess county administrator cleared up some things about why things are running over there today in the public hearing, or actually yesterday, and we're here today at the public hearing. It would appear that someone maybe should have said, hey, let's pause. Let's pause the contractors, see if they'll wait a day or two to see if we can get the public hearing done, get this final plan, this final step in place. Might have been a good decision. However, it wasn't done. There was no pause given. And so you had the media here yesterday, and they're aware of this public hearing today. And they turned to me and say, hey, I thought the last public hearing is tomorrow. I said, yep, that's right. Well, why, all of a sudden, the dozers are lighting up and they're moving dirt? Well, how is that possible if you don't have the plan approved? If the county doesn't have the plan approved? I said, I, I said, welcome to Benton County. Welcome to Benton County. Jessica read the four findings and declarations. I don't know if I missed it. And maybe at some point, somebody in the board can address how the new building is going to maintain public services because I think public services are going on today yet. And if nothing happened and if there was a remodel or an addition, public services would still go on. So somebody maybe, if you can explain how you got to your findings and declarations. Number two, I have a number two that says, for the redevelopment of the area by private enterprise. I don't know if that's pertinent or not anymore, but I don't know how private enterprise enters into this redevelopment plan. For the gentleman that spoke in favor of the project, and he specifically talked about D V S services and getting a passport, I would recommend, suggest that you go online, see what they have capable online for that sort of thing. Last week, I received my renewed passport in the mail. Did it online, send it to me in the mail. Jessica also talked about when she reviewed the redevelopment plan in front of you. She said, you know, this is in the best interest of Benton County. Well, I don't know how she determined that, and I don't know how the board determined that. There was one way that the board could have determined what was in the best interest of the county. And we got a little taste of that with the petition. And the best way to determine would have been to have a countywide vote. Of course, that's not going to happen. So for her to get up there today and say, county determined, best interest of Benton County, is kind of rich. So I guess the optics from yesterday, and it's going to be very useful in the future. Would have been nice if somebody would have said pause, at least till we get through this today. It, I think would have went a long way, at least in the public view. But it's unfortunately kind of typical, so. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank you for your support in allowing people to speak like they have. It's not always been easy. It's really hard to see what's going on over there, especially how it transpired at the end with the project started before this final step. And this is the final step because if this board would not accept this development plan, it wouldn't go forward. And so today's vote is very important. One more thing, I guess, before. A generic Google search with a definition of a public hearing. Public hearing is a meeting or gathering where members of the public are invited to promote input, feedback, testimony on a specific issue or proposal. These hearings are typically organized by government agencies, bodies, legislative bodies, or other organizations to gather public opinion on matters that may impact the community. Public hearings are an essential part of the democratic process as they provide platform for citizens to voice their concerns and influence decision-making. So as we sit here today at this public hearing and listen to the bulldozers across the road.
Okay, anybody else wishing to speak?
Mary Kay Nordman, 9511, 25th Street Northeast. I do have a couple of questions, but when I seen the news last night and realized that Benton County was on the news for all the wrong reasons, and I know commissioners have pointed out the previous commissioners, their legacy. Just remember, this is your legacy by doing this and what your vote is today. And as you, I'm sure, have seen and heard, and I know some of you are denying that people are calling you up and nobody's complaining to you or nobody's saying no about this government center. I, I find that hard to believe, but there's a lot of things I found really hard to believe with all of this. I guess when I seen the article, or seen the TV report last night, I was thinking, you know, I can't build a house or anything without crossing my Ts and dotting my Is in Benton County. It's very important, isn't it, to have that all done prior to starting a project? So yesterday was a huge slap in the face for this county. I really, you know, feel like you guys have the thumb on everybody to do the right things, and that didn't happen. I'm kind of curious about the interest rates, if interest rates drop in the near future, which could happen, just like, you know, prices of the building could go up and could go down, like you said. What's going to happen with these interest rates with, with what's going on here? Have you taken any of that into consideration? I believe Stearns County has their budget set at 12% for this increases this next fiscal year. And I'm looking at comparing Benton County to them. We have a government center that's going to be another 8% on our taxes. I know we're as transparent as possible with the commissioners that are up here. Did you take into consideration what's going on in the world and the county and the state and at the federal level? And what our taxes are going to be for this? There's been a lot of information kind of leaked out or gossiped out about, you know, what are we going to do with how much the cost is once we get the government center there and the old government center? I've heard that care is going to come into this part and the dentist office and maybe a senior living center. What if all those things don't happen? And who's going to be paying for keeping this part of the courthouse up? And who's going to pay for the demolition on the other part? Have you considered all of that in your numbers? Just curious. And then Pam, I, I do recall you saying a couple of meetings ago that you wouldn't be breaking ground in July and August. You made it very, you told me that, it was about two meetings ago, and I'm just kind of surprised that we didn't hit July, but we're definitely into August. Again, we worked hard at getting the signatures. Commissioner said, you know what, get the signatures and we will put it on the vote. And then not doing that was really another slap in the face. But this is your legacy. You decide how you're going to vote today. I truly believe that if you would say no, that cost would not go to the county, on the back of the county. That would go back to the people that started this project. So I hope you vote the right way.
Anyone else?
Good morning.
Hey.
Darrell Watercutt, 551 53rd Avenue Southeast. I want to reference my, my new map. We're making, giving a name to our group, Make Benton County Great Again. So it starts by, by openness and transparency. And I'll echo what Mike and Mary Kay said, this meeting this morning, this public meeting seems kind of pointless. And we're supposed to be here for public input, excuse me, for or against the project that's already been started. So what's the use? What are we here for? But anyway, what I want to address is some of the hidden costs that I, that I think are in this project that haven't really been talked about. Last time I asked about the interest rates of the C I P and the H R, H R A bonds. And I, excuse me, I, I didn't get an answer. I was told they, they were out there. Well, I looked out there, and there's, there was something referencing back at the C I P bonds where, I looked at the Benton County website. And by the way, the biggest slap in the face to me on this, what's going on across the street is this morning, I go to the Benton County website and here, there's a live cam looking at the construction project. So, I mean, tell me this was not, it, it's, it's frustrating. But anyway, last time I, I said, I looked for the, so I looked for the interest rates and I, I think, and I can ask the finance lady here. Jessica, well, the, I believe the C I P bonds were going to be 4%, the H R A 4.5%. Is that correct? Okay. So I, I did the simple work of, and the other question I have, Jessica, would these bond rates and interest be calculated the same way as a mortgage, as you would get from a mortgage banker and stuff?
No, because the mortgage has a single rate that's attached to it. With bonds, each maturity has a different interest rate. And I want to clarify that we won't know what the rate actually is until the bond's out.
Okay, but starting out right now, we start this project, we're at 4.5% for 20 years.
Can't hear him. Mr. Watercutt, could you, if you're going to either have Jessica come up to the mic and share it or something there with the questions?
See, I, I can't hear very good, so I did hear much.
No, that's okay.
If you would rest the side, sorry.
So this may be helpful. For the board's benefit, this is in your finance plan that's included for your H R A packet. But to visualize, get to the debt service schedule. So in the early years, the coupon or the interest rate is going to be lower than at your later years. So think about it more so as like a CD. So if you were to purchase, for example, the first maturity of the Benton County bonds at 4.35, the interest rate at present is about 3.3%. If you're buying the 20-year maturity, it's at about 4.90%. So on a blended rate, we're at 4.51% currently.
Over the life?
Yes. And that assumes, of course, that the bonds would be outstanding for the full 20-year term. We've discussed this. That is uncommon. Oftentimes, communities will refund bonds.
Okay, well, that, that helps. So my numbers might be, might be a little bit off, but I went to mortgagecalculator.com, dot org, and I plugged in 24.5 million for the value, and 2, $2 million down payment and four-year, or 4% interest for 20 years. And I just, to me, the, the interest rate isn't as much as what the public needs to know as what the interest cost is for this thing. And, you know, my, and I'm not sure if you had that, Jessica, but by at 4%, I should just go to 5. At 5%, the total interest paid for the life, if you were doing this as a mortgage, I know this, the total interest would be 11,663,000. So that, that ends up being, when you look at the amount being financed, it's 51.8% of the amount being, you know, the general public doesn't know this yet. You know, they don't know what we're paying for, and you, nobody's, nobody's been transparent about that. And, and I think it's important. And I think it's important, you know, I kind of have a little bit of a finance background and understand this stuff. So the total cost of the project, being the 24.5, it ends up being, with interest is really the number we're looking at, is 34,163,000. So, you know, compared to 24.5 that you've been, that's been advertised, that's a big difference. We're talking, we're talking, get back to my, we're talking hidden, so the hidden cost of interest expense is approximately one-half the total cost of the budget project, of the building project. And so it's a big number that was hidden and basically I wanted hidden no more. I'd like, and I don't know how close I am to the total, because things will change. Do you think that's a pretty accurate?
At 5%, obviously, is high.
No, I went 4.4.
Oh, I thought you said 4.4.
No, 4.4. I think this is important.
It is important. And I want to clarify something. So at every meeting that we have had where we've discussed numbers, we have always presented the information in terms of average annual debt service, which includes your principal payment and your interest. It would be incredibly irresponsible to provide you with information just based on your principal payment. And we would never do that. I want to make that very clear. We have always expressed any sort of estimate in terms of total principal and interest as your average debt service per year. When we've done any sort of tax impact, that has included the interest because that's, that's part of financing. So respectfully, I disagree that that's been a hidden number in terms of looking at, you know, the actual debt service runs.
I'm not saying hidden number to these guys. I'm saying hidden number to the public.
Sure, I understand.
People think we're paying 24.5 million and we're paying 34.5.
That's correct. Obviously, there is an interest component anytime you're borrowing. And when we look at this over that 20-year spread, I do agree with your numbers. We're close. However, I would again stress the point that it is very uncommon for any type of bond issue to stay outstanding for the length of time that it is set for with the original issuance. It is very common for bonds to be refunded, particularly so with lease revenue bonds.
Okay, all right. Well, given that, and then, you know, I know you might refinance and stuff like that and really, but the levy rate that we're going to be assessed on our taxes, is that going to go down when you refinance and stuff? I mean, what happens with that? That's a savings and it should be passed back to us, you know? I mean, does our, you know, let's say our levy rates, which were published, and I don't really believe that they're going to be that low, but like $88 for a year for a median household? Is, you know, once you refinance, you've got less interest you're paying, does the levy rate go down?
The only thing, the only thing I can reference to that is that a number of years ago, we refinanced the bonds that the county has now. And there was a significant savings as far as I can remember, Monty. And that was used, we offset that with an increase in levy. We did not increase the levy as much as we would have had because I believe we were saving maybe, I don't know, 80,000 a year or something. There was a number I don't know.
So is that levy done every year?
Yes, yeah. Every year we set the levy. And that was incorporated into the levy. So maybe we saved a 1% on the levy for the years following the refinance of the bonds.
All right, good, good. So that was my point on the interest. The other one, and I think Mary Kay brought this up, was the current building structures that we have. You know, what's going to be done? If you close your eyes and visualize, a year and a half from now or next fall, 2026, we're going to have two buildings. And, you know, there's been little, there's been a lot of gossip about what's going to happen, but really no direction. And I know you have time, but, you know, we're going to have two buildings and you've got to pay a cost, utility costs and all that kind of stuff. I don't know, in both buildings. Now, you may be selling, selling some of it, but it's been advertised that it's in the, these buildings are in such bad shape, who's going to buy them? You know, they're almost inhabitable. And you could lease it and hire a leasing company. Those are, there's hidden costs, you know? I really don't know what the plan is. I've heard the CARE group is taking claims to like the DMV area. And I don't know what their agreement is, if they get the land or the building over in the county sheds, if they get that stuff for free or how that works. But if it is, it doesn't look good because there's two members on this board that are on the CARE board. And it'd be terrible if they're getting, even though they're a nonprofit, and I love CARE, I love what they do, but, you know, they need to be treated equitably. If somebody else wants to come in here and pay for that, you know, as a taxpayer, I want them to have it, you know? And so I, these are just things that I wanted to bring out, that I feel that you guys have been transparent in the building, you know, the architectural process and stuff. But the transparency on the financing and what's going to be done with the, or to the public, you guys might know, but we have no idea. The last thing I wanted to ask for is, the last time I was here, I wanted, I asked if the property tax increase that we all get would be itemized on the property tax statement from this so that people would see what they're paying for the next 20 years or whatever it is, just for that building. Because I didn't like how some of you attacked Commissioner Pop the first meeting I was here, May 6th, for something with the airport commission. And again, I have poor hearing, so I don't hear everything, but, you know, and they, you wanted it itemized on the property tax statement just so that you could pin it on him and make him accountable to that. Well, I want to make you guys accountable to this. This is, like Mary Kay said, this is your legacy and we need, we need to let people know what they're getting, what they're paying for and get that out there. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Whoops.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners.
Good morning.
Like Mary Kay said, you know, we've, well, we, first we've seen the MICA, we see, this is Chad Pop, Graham Township. We've seen the MICA folks present budget shortfalls that are getting pushed down to our county levels. We've seen a fellow, a lot of us heard that a fellow county, neighboring county is proposing a 12% property tax increase just to cover those shortfalls. So if you take that 12%, I'm sure we're going to have to do something at our level as well. But if you take that 12% for our building costs, I wouldn't be surprised if we see close to a 20% tax, property tax increase, all said and done. I hope not, but I guess I just advise people to watch their property taxes closely and see what's coming down though, what's coming down. Thank you.
Right, thanks. Anyone else?
Michael Deppa, 12831 85th Avenue Northeast, Foley, Minnesota. Today I got a few questions for a few people. It was pretty relevant this morning that Headley mentioned that the reasons that they're moving dirt across the road. Was that approved by any of you commissioners? Was it discussed? Did, and he made his own decision, the way it sounds, that he let the contractors just go out and start moving the dirt because there was a meeting either on this June date and this July date to let the public know that Mr. Headley works for the county. The county's you commissioners and the county's the taxpayers. So not to, not to point fingers at anybody, it's to agree to disagree. But you have a person over here that I consider that's railroadness to you people. And you can call it railroading, you can call it the CIP bond, you can call it the HRA bond. I got a question for a couple of the commissioners. Jared, we'll start with you. You mentioned that you would honor the CIP bond, is that correct?
What do you mean, the CIP with the original?
Once the signatures were valid, that they would honor the signatures.
And that was my vote back then, is I honored the signatures and put, my vote was to put it to the taxpayers.
No, it's just a yes or no, yes or no. Did you honor your word?
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate you for honoring your word. Okay, Ms. Voight, or Ms. Benoit, we had a meeting here and I don't have the exact date. When we did the CIP bond, that they said that they'd put it up for a vote in 2026 on the ballot. If the signatures came through, is that correct, yes or no?
Restate your question.
The question is, is once the signatures became valid and the signatures were going to come through to the board and to the people, that it would go on a ballot for a vote? Yes or no?
Are you asking me what my point was?
What did you say? What did you say that you would do? Once the, if the, if the signatures became valid, that they got the petition and the signature became valid, what did you say you would do?
I'd put it to vote. But I didn't know the information. No, listen, you're getting your chance to speak. You want my answer. I don't ask you yes or no questions, so I have the right to explain myself. I didn't know all the information that we had when I made that statement. So yes, I made the statement, I will own up to that. But I also did my due diligence to do pros and cons to that. And I have chosen a different path from that because it could cost this county a whole lot more money if we waited for that vote. That's the reason I did what I did. And I stated every one of those, Mike, at every meeting that you were at, I read my facts of findings and everything. So anybody in this room that wants those facts of findings and how I came to that decision can go back and review that meeting that I read those at.
So you changed your, you changed your mind?
I did. Do you change your mind?
Can I change my mind? I'm a person of my word. I'm honest. I honor the honesty.
I'm honest too. I answered your question and said, yes, that's what I said. And when I got the facts, I changed my mind. So I am being honest.
So you weren't honest to the taxpayers?
How am I being dishonest to the taxpayers?
There was 1,900 signatures that you went against.
And like I said, out of 42,000 people, there, that's 4 point some percent of the people. And regardless of what Mary Kay stated up there, I'm telling you that other than one phone call that I received and one out of the emails I received after explaining 100% of what I know to be true to those people, every, we ended our conversation either agreeing to a disagree or agreeing with what I had stated. I got one really bad phone call that was reported to our sheriff's department and we will leave it at that. And if somebody wants to hear that phone call after this meeting in private, I'm more than willing to play that phone call for whoever wants to hear it.
Mine's not about a phone call, mine's about the 1,900, or 1,900 signatures.
Correct.
That we're going to be approved on the CIP bond. Okay, this is for Mr. Headley. We came up and you come up with the CIP bond and there was, they said that they were going to use the CIP bond. There was nothing directed as an HRA bond, period, at the beginning of the process. During the, during the CIP bond, you brought up the only way that they would, the project would be put to a halt is if the people could put it to a vote. And the only way that they would go to a vote is, is the petition, a reverse referendum, the petition. He brought the sheet up, stood there, says that you'd have to use this sheet by state law or whatever, that if you guys got the signatures, that we would honor and put it on the ballot for a vote. That came from Mr. Headley. You can go back and listen to all the tapes from the meetings and that's exactly what was said. Okay? Mr. Headley works for the county, he works for the commissioners. This morning he gave a, an option of why they're over there digging. There's no bond approved for them to get digging. So is he, is he running the county or are the commissioners running the county? He works for you people. Okay? Then once they, the signatures came and were valid and approved, he comes up at the first thing at the meeting, he comes up and introduces an HRA bond. Hey, I'm sorry, people, about the CIP. People forget that. I appreciate your signatures, going out and doing all your work or whatever it is. That isn't how it works. There was never even discussed about the HRA bond to the public.
Mike, one thing I will say about the HRA bonds, we all up here sat here and knew about them as a deal, but we elected not to go that route. Monty Headley did not spring that on us on the spur of the moment. That, we knew about that going way back, but we chose not to go that route because of the higher interest rate. I mean, it comes with a higher interest rate. I'll agree with Mr. Watercutt, what he said.
Okay, okay, I can agree to disagree. And you said that, but that should have been brought to the public. The public would, no, hang on, Ed. Nobody would have even went out and got a petition to put it to a vote had the HRA been discussed. Everybody knows that. If everybody, if somebody would have been forthright and honest and brought it to the people, we wouldn't be here today having a discussion of what's going on. You know, it's about, it's about honesty. It's about integrity. It's about being truthful. You people have a decision to make today. Just because they're over there moving that dirt, that's not what the people wanted, not, I'm not saying all the people. It should have went to a vote, whatever the vote would be, yes or no, that's the way it would have played out. That's the way it would have played out. I read an article in Star and Tribune, this is to Mr. Headley. They said that the remodel, they're going to do a remodel or revamp, would be 19 million. In the Star and Tribune, it's quoted as 23 million. What is it? Is it 19 million or is it 23 million? It was in the Star Tribune this week. His words to the Star and Tribune.
I think we've always said it was going to be 23.
23 to 24 million is what it was after our third or fourth meeting when we started this process. That number hasn't changed.
Here's what I want. Who did, who did the walkthrough and how many bids did you get for the remodel? How many? How many were done? We went and did a, we went and did the project that we're going to build this government center over there. And we put it out for bids and all these bids came in. How many bids came in on the remodel? I want to doc, I would like to see the documentation. Is it one people, six people, 10 people? You can't just do one and say, hey, this contractor said this is what it is.
I think how we got to, I know how we got to that point is, when you look at the number of 23 versus 29 and you get a brand-new building for 29, the economics just didn't make sense because that 23 is, is either, it's a rough estimate on what it would cost. And we did have people go through the building and Pete is one of them back there.
So you got the person that's going to be the new contractor on the new building and the remodel do the estimate and we don't go get other opinions? That's not right.
Our architect also came back with other numbers too.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Just because I was not on the board when that happened. So am I wrong in asking, okay, so you guys, this board sent it out and had have a draft done of the new building? I mean, the whole architectural plant in order to get it out for bids, to get proper bidding on everything, correct?
Yeah.
And we spent over or just under a million to do that. Am I right?
Just more.
More, okay. And then if you needed a full estimate of this project to do this project, would you not have to spend that kind of money again to do a design and everything with this building? would you not have to spend that kind of money again to do a design and everything with this building? And spend that kind of money again?
It's true.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I don't, I want to make sure I'm understanding.
And Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, because I wasn't here for it. Is past boards did a, do a discussion with Better Johnson, I believe, on a remodel in past years. That's been discussed for a number of years and a number of different estimates. Is that right? I, I believe you were here for that.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe, and I'm not going to say believe, is, is that when you come and do the CIP bond, and the, the signatures weren't there, the signatures were there, and you don't honor what you say, you wronged the people. You wronged the people. And today, you can change that. It's your decision. They're not far into the project of moving that dirt. That's nothing. Look at the new Prague situation that went on with the police department. What happened there? Research it. Today, the project started out there already, under somebody's command and told them to do it. I don't believe the board, Ed, did the board approve it to start yesterday, moving of the dirt, the project?
No, I, I mean, not that I know. We approved the, the construction company. I believe it's under the construction manager.
So, we have, so we have a person that's?
We approved the bids.
You approved the bids, but the funding's not approved, correct?
Correct.
The, so how do we start a project across the road without the funding and approval of our elected officials of Baton County? We have five chairpeople up there, and they're over there moving dirt because Mr. Headley said so. He said to give the contractors a go-ahead to start the project. It doesn't matter to me if they start the project or not. Apples are apples, oranges are oranges. And what I mean by that is, facts are facts, lies are lies. And there's some lies in here. I believe that some stuff that's scripted that didn't even get to Mr. Pop, that all of a sudden, we're with this HRA. All of a sudden, it just pops up on the screen, and your signatures ain't valued, we're going with this?
Mr. Chair, could I ask, uh, Mike, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, were you or were you not in attendance at a committee of the whole meeting we had when we looked at all the different options before us, when there was a, a significant material change to the bid of the project? We talked about multiple funding, and that is in the record, and that is in the minutes. And I'm quite certain you were there. So, it bothers me a little bit when you are projecting that we're lying about it when you were actually at a meeting where we talked about this.
And?
We're at that meeting.
Explain what you're talking about.
We had a committee of the whole meeting where the board was?
June, June tenth.
June tenth, we had a committee of the whole meeting, where the board sat out here under committee of the whole, not a board meeting, but a committee of the whole, and yourself, if, if, I'm going by memory here, I believe Mr. Levenduski was here, I believe the Watercots were here.
Yes.
And you sat right in this area. And you were here for that meeting when this board had discussions about what our options were going to be. So, for you to say, for you to say that we're lying about that is absolutely incorrect. You were here.
Okay.
I, I need to clarify that, because I don't like being called a liar.
I didn't say, I didn't say you were.
Lies and lies.
There's lies and lies.
But you're, you're, you're projecting that we're lying to you about the funding options. And you were here when we talked about the funding options. So, please don't say that we didn't give that information to the public. You were actually here.
I was here, but there was nothing discussed about an HRA bond.
Absolutely was. You need to go back and look in those minutes.
Okay, then I'm wrong. I can agree to be wrong.
Okay, and just wanted, I'm trying to clarify here, because we're, we're getting on touchy water here where we're being accused of things.
There's no touchy waddy.
There, there is, when we're being accused of things that aren't true. So, there's, there's a way different on if we disagree with something than if you're calling some of us out, or one of us out for lying.
I didn't call anybody out. I says, I says, there's lies. There's, there's not proper.
You're referencing the lies to the financing options, and you're actually here for those discussions.
Um, Mike, I, I do have the minutes from that meeting in front of me. And the list of people on there is there. And then, if on page two, it, it does say that, um, Green discussed the HRA lease revenue bond as another funding option that the county could pursue on section four sixty-five point one.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, but if I recall that day, Mr. Chair, you allowed public input during that discussion. So?
And it does say that if the bonds are issued, it would, it would be a one million dollar in excess.
It, absolutely, it was after the signatures. I'm not saying it wasn't. Yeah, I'm saying we held that meeting, and, Mike, please correct me if I'm wrong. You and I had a conversation about, I think your question to me was, why are you having this cow? And my answer to you was, I believe the board needs to do their due diligence on seeing what our options are, because there's been a very material change to the bid documents. That was my answer to you of why that committee of the whole was happening. We called the committee of the whole meeting to discuss what the options were. And you were all here in attendance for that discussion. I'm not saying we agree on it. I'm just clarifying that that discussion happened. I never said that it didn't happen before the bids. It happened, or excuse me, the petition. It did happen after the petition. You're absolutely right. And we called that meeting to get everything out on the table about what our potential options were.
Before the petition, so we had a full understanding before the petition. But then we want to probably pursue the petition that was put in the paper by Mr. Kowinski. If he probably gets a petition, this project is dead.
But hopefully, hopefully, what we can agree on, I hope, is I don't think there's anyone in this room, including this board, or any of the public, anybody who signed the petition, anybody who's for it, whatever, nobody knew where these bids were coming in at. That was a total.
A million dollars more, Scott.
Pardon?
It costs the taxpayers a million dollars more. You're saying you want to stick a million dollars into the government center to have it fixed up?
We're mixing stuff here now. We had already spent, this board had already spent one point three million dollars to get the spot where we were.
The new funding costs at least a million dollars more on the tax credit. We've never done the petition if you.
That's based on overall, the whole duration of the project.
Right, right.
And the bonds, and as, as Jessica said, it, they get sold way before then and refinanced.
But there was a million dollars that right there, we could have did a bid on the government center to have it fixed up. You're saying, Pam's saying, oh, you know what, we didn't want to spend any more money on the government center.
Okay, don't put words in my mouth, because that's not what I said. I asked the question, I asked the question to, Mr.
You guys have called me out many times while I was sitting here, so don't think that I can't call you out.
No, you didn't call me out, but, but don't put words in my mouth. I never once said what you just said. I asked, I asked, Mr., I asked the chair, because I was not on the board back then, what was spent prior to putting that together? And would it not cost to do the same thing, to, the same amount, to do the same thing for this building? That's what I said.
They did an hour and a half walkthrough. Is that correct? How long did it take you guys to walk through the government center to give them the price? Approximately?
I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, if, if Mr. Deppa could be allowed to finish his comments?
If, we're, we're going to have to have people come to the podium if you're going to speak.
All right.
Um.
Can you allow Mr. Deppa to finish?
Yeah, I think if, um, we'll move on unless Mr. Deppa's got any more, uh, comments.
Well, I, I do have other comments, is, is that with the Star and Tribune, I appreciate, I appreciate everything that the commissioners have done. This is not, this is not on Jared, or Scott, Ed, Steve, Pam. I'm a person that if you tell me something, I believe that. And he brought up that they would honor the CIP if the signatures were validated. We come to the next meeting, and they start talking about the HRA. Okay? I, I, I missed it, Scott. Okay, I can agree to that. You know, that you're saying that it was brought up at the whole meeting or whatever, but also at the whole meeting, I will mention to you, if you recall, if the signatures become valid, did you? You said that you would put it on the ballot in twenty twenty-six.
I'm pretty sure you're mixing the comedians, the meetings, Mr. Deppa.
Okay, yeah.
So, on the May sixth public hearing, which Commissioner Kapinski referenced, uh, his backing that he said he would put it on the twenty-sixth ballot. I'm quite certain I said we would likely do that. There is no way I would commit to putting it on the twenty-sixth ballot. I had no idea what that would cost. We hadn't, if we would have said, yep, we're going to put it on the twenty-sixth ballot, based on what? We hadn't, we wouldn't have gone out for bids yet. What if it came in at thirty-five million? I probably wouldn't have put it on the twenty-sixth ballot because of that. I didn't have information for my vote to say, yes, we'll put it on the twenty-sixth ballot. And I think I have the support of the board to say that I, I never said, I will put it on the twenty-sixth ballot. I, there's no way I'd commit to that, because I didn't have enough information. What would you say, Mike, if this board chose to put it on the twenty-sixth ballot? They went out and they rebid, it came in at thirty-five million dollars, and the question on the ballot would have been this. Are we building new, or are we remodeling? Are we building new for whatever that bid comes in, or are we remodeling for whatever that bid comes in? That's going to be the choices. That's what would have very likely been the choice. Because we've all agreed for a very long time that something was going to happen. So, if you can fast forward to the twenty-sixth ballot and facing those two questions. Now, none of us know what those costs were, because we hadn't bid it. So, I would never say, I'll put this on the twenty-sixth ballot, and I have no idea what it's going to cost. Why would I do that?
Scott, I, I disagree with you in the soccer.
Wait, 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 we'll get Frank, we'll, we'll have you come to the podium.
You understand my, I'm trying to clarify that.
Yeah, you're kind of clarifying it. Okay. I'm going to clarify that the five commissioners run the county, not Mr. Headley to go tell somebody to go start digging dirt across the road. I, I don't know where that come, I don't, I.
I don't know if that's true for sure, Mike.
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't.
But you, you people know.
Well, Ms. Kim, perhaps you could ask Pete if I've ever given him any direction. Why don't you ask Pete?
It's probably under the direction of, if you want to make comment, Pete, at all. What? Yeah, probably.
Good morning, commissioners. Uh, basically, I'm going to echo what, uh, Mr. Headley said. To start the show off with is when the county board approved those contracts, uh, that was the notice to proceed with the work of the, the project. Uh, it's not just some bulldozer showing up to move topsoil ahead of IEA, doing some future inspections with what we have to deal with with the MPCA. Little known fact, a lot of the material and stuff has already been on order or being placed. So, for example, all the steel for the project has already been shipped from Chicago Tube and Iron to Fargo, uh, North Dakota, Mid-America Steel. So, a lot of those processes were put in place at the action of the county board to approve those contracts.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, Pete, is it, and I want to clarify for Mike's sake and our own, too. I don't believe any of us, or Monte, called you and said, Pete, start digging.
No.
You moved ahead based off of this board's approval of contracts.
Yes, that would be the logical spot, as long as everybody has their insurances in place.
And nobody here controlled that timeline?
No, sir.
Okay.
So, what we do have is a schedule though, that we need to get these footings and foundations in ahead of winter to, uh, alleviate potential extra.
So, Mr. Kapinski's comment was?
Is this uncommon? Or is this a common practice to get moving?
Once the contracts are approved, you have now let the horse out of the barn as far as getting these contractors going. Yes.
So, Pete, I got a question. What would happen in a case like this if the funding didn't materialize?
Well, if you think back a couple of meetings ago, I think there was a parallel path besides the HRA funding that potentially could have been looked at as well. Uh, short-term, I think you were going to potentially use reserves to get this project started off the ground until such time as this financing mechanism was in place.
It wasn't. What if the plan wasn't approved? What if it was?
Yeah, if the, if the plan never got approved, what would happen to the cost existent? Because?
It would be a notice to stop the, uh, the contractors. Uh, at the same time, you would incur costs with what these contractors already have into this project. But let alone, it's not just one day of moving dirt with the, the topsoil off of the, the site next door. It would have been further reaching than that.
Okay, thanks, Pete. Mike, can you make, we're running really long here, so.
Uh, I want to end with, uh, I think he already ended for you guys, that, um, there's nobody that comes and builds for me without having approval and bonding, down payment. The board hasn't approved no bonding. They come in from somebody's direction, start moving, start building. No bonding, no funding approved. You don't do that in the real world. This is the real world, because it's the taxpayers who fit the bill. You have a decision to make today. And you can feel the, um, energy. And that's something that you have to make with your decision. There's no way, if I seen somebody come to my property and I was building a project, there was a chicken barn, a dairy barn, a hog barn, a house, all of a sudden, I don't have the funding approved, and all of a sudden, they ordered the material and they start building it, that somebody would say, whoa, I ain't got the funding or anything done with it. I'm just going to leave that. Leave that in your mind. Would, would you, would you allow that? Is that right? Is that honest? No, it's not. Thank you for your time. Nothing's personal to Jared, Scott, Ed, Steve, Pam. You know, there's people that don't want to speak, or whatever it is. But if I feel that something's wrong, or I feel something is scripted, I feel it's scripted, you know, that we get to this point today that we are having a meeting after the fact of what's going on. The public has an input. And the input is not taken. You people are elected by the people to do a job. Do the right thing today. Just because that dirt got moved out there, that doesn't mean anything. Doesn't. Do the right thing. Do what the people want. Not what the people want, put it up for a vote. If it goes through, it goes through. They're going to say it's going to cost more later. You don't know if it's going to cost more later. They took the tariffs off. The prices of materials should be coming down.
Thank you. Frank, state your name and?
Hi, I'm Frank. Okay, Scott. The soccer betrag said with this right reverse referendum, they said a couple of times, you would honor the constituents, whatever they voted. And they had the nineteen hundred signatures. And then, you know, when I called you, thanks for talking to me, you have, you know, you found two million bucks in a slosh fund. Shouldn't that money be going back to the taxpayers, or you shouldn't, you lower the levy for the next year? I mean, you allocate so much money to run this dump of a county. If, if the money ain't spent, you shouldn't be overcharging.
Frank, do you, would you like me to share the explanation I shared with you that day about that?
Yes.
Would that be okay? Because I spent an hour and forty-five minutes on the phone with you, I think, right?
I know.
Okay. So, my, just so the board knows, my explanation about the two million dollars in cash that I explained to Frank was this. And Monte, or anybody else, please correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to simplify it way down. Let's say that the county budget's a hundred dollars a year. Okay, a hundred dollars. We typically spend ninety-seven to ninety-eight of those dollars on our budget. That's typical. And we take the three dollars that are left, and we put it into reserves. Okay? Next year, we might spend a hundred and one, because all of a sudden, we had to buy a new plow truck. I'm just throwing out hypotheticals. Okay, now we've overspent by a dollar. So, we go to our fund reserves and we take the dollar out. Instead of raising the levy, we've already collected that money. So, we're taking the dollar out of our fund reserves, okay?
No, I under.
That's the very simplified process. But then, if you push that forward on a sixty-million-dollar budget, and over the last number of years, the county has established a, a larger fund balance. And so, when we sit down and look at budget time, we, we look at it and say, we have X number of dollars in our fund balance. So, this board unanimously said we could afford to take two million dollars of our reserves and put it towards this project if it goes through. That's where the two million dollars came from. We don't, i- if, if we have a hundred extra dollars at the end of the year, we don't go through the effort of divvying that up between the twenty thousand parcels that are in this county to refund it. We just, we recognize that in the coming year and try not to raise the levy as much. So, that's the discussion we had that day.
Yeah, we did. But. But I think, I don't know how much you got in your slush fund, but I think two million is a lot.
It, it absolutely is a lot of money. But again, we're, what, at a sixty-million-dollar budget, plus or minus, depending on? So, in the scheme of, is it a lot of money? It absolutely is, Frank. But in the scheme of things, we have to look at that at budget time and, and figure out what we're gonna do with that. We abs, like, this year, I don't know. I don't have the fund balance off the top of my head. But when we come to levy time, we might ask the administrator, what would happen to our levy if we took seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of our fund balance and put it towards our projected budget? So we may take some of those reserves out to try to keep our levy down. That's happened in the past. Some years we'll say, we can't afford to do that, it needs to be all levy. So there's all kinds of discussions that go on with that at budget time, which is coming up in about two weeks. And we'll have those discuss, next week already?
Next week.
We'll, we'll have those discussions then, at budget time.
So you got a limit as how much you will ever get to in the slush fund?
Well, I, I don't think anybody here wants a very large slush fund. You're absolutely right, we've already collected those tax-
But two million is a lot.
It's a lot of money, but not on a county our size.
No.
And so-
But we're a small county.
Well, I, I think I explained to you this time too. We're, we're certainly not large, Frank, but we're the twenty-fifth largest county in the state of Minnesota out of eighty-seven. We have forty-two thousand people here. We're not large, but we're certainly not small. We're twenty-five out of eighty-seven. So, that's, I'm, I'm just trying to keep that into perspective.
And then on the Taj Mahal deal. I would prefer it went to the vote. And if it would have cost thirty-five million, I would have been happier with that because the people decided that. Not Monty and his five bosses. Well, I think Monty decided all that.
I'd have to disagree with you there, Frank. Monty's not the one responsible for those decisions. He brings that stuff to this board. This board as a whole makes those decisions.
So how do you guys justify a tendency? I mean-
Justify what, I'm sorry?
The Taj Mahal. It's, it's a liability to the county. It's not an asset. How much tax revenue is that gonna bring in? If you look at it from a business standpoint, not a dime.
That's a little hard to, to mix those two because we're obligated to provide services for every taxpayer in this county.
You got a building right here to provide the services.
And we've had, we've had fifty-three meetings and we've had those discussions and all of those meetings about how we got to that point. So, I guess I'd suggest to read those minutes and look at those meetings because that was all discussed. We don't, we don't have the time here today to go over all that. Eighteen months' worth of meetings.
And then when I talked to you, you know, you said at eleventh or twelfth hour, everybody comes up against this plan. You said no one ever comes to meetings. Well, number one, most of us got jobs. We ain't paid seventy bucks per damn, we ain't paid mileage and we ain't paid a salary to come to these meetings. That's why people don't go to meetings. We got jobs to pay our high taxes.
I understand, and we're responsible to pay our taxes too.
Right, but you guys are getting paid to come here, the constituents ain't.
That's, that's true. I, I, I didn't make up how that works, that's how it works.
Well, I know that's how it works.
Is there a better option out there? I mean, we've tried to, I, I-
Well-
We've had these discussions, Frank, because you, you might like it at six o'clock and Tim might like it at one and Mike might want it at two in the afternoon and Pam over there wants it at eight in the morning. There's no way we could make anybody happy on the time we set.
The timing of this one is bullshit, though.
Time isn't, there's never gonna be a perfect time for everybody. But I think during the day, it's a bad time.
Okay?
Okay.
And then, why should anyone trust any of you guys anymore?
As far as what?
On your integrity and that. You know, that April sixteen, sixteenth meeting, you had that outfit on in Little Falls? Well, I know why they were here. They, they stood to gain three million bucks, ten percent out of thirty million. They stood to gain three million. Headley, he was gun home, he gotta get it going by the end of July. And then, you know, you guys were gonna honor your vote, but boom. What do you guys decide? All the taxpayers are so stupid, you guys know better than everybody?
I think we had follow-up meetings about that, Frank, and I don't remember that you were here.
Yes, you did, but I, I can't make every meeting.
And I understand, and that's part-
I got a damn farm to run to pay my high taxes. Well, I gotta go.
Okay.
This is a corrupt county.
Anybody else that wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Becky Lesniak, um-
Becky, could you pull the mic down, thank you?
I'm Becky Lesniak, I work in Benton County. Um, I just think the people are upset because of the lying. I, I was at the meetings and I did hear that you would honor the signatures that were brought in. And I understand we had like nineteen-hundred signatures, um, and we only needed one thousand one hundred and forty-six. They said, yep, we're not gonna do anything. We'll put it on the ballot, whether it be in November for a special election or next year's election. And then all of a sudden, we're hearing, oh, there's an HRE loan, now we're gonna go forward with this building. Do you see how every, why everybody is so mad? Because you went back on your word. That's exactly what you said because I was here and heard the same thing out of all of you. That you would not move forward, it would go to the general election. If, if we got the signatures needed. Because I think it's the public's right to vote on something this big. I don't think it's the administrator, I don't think it's the five of you that should be making that decision. For everybody in the county. You say there's forty-two thousand people in the county and we only got like two thousand signatures. We only needed eleven forty-six. We surpassed that. Why would we have to go out and get more signatures? Or why are you saying, oh, not many people signed it? That's all we needed. So, I'm just letting you know that, that's, to me, that's the reason why everybody's upset. If you would have done it on the up and up, we wouldn't be having these conversations today. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Nick Schumacher, Gilmanton Township. Same thing, I was here at that meeting. I can't make every meeting. We have jobs to do just like everybody else. And at that meeting, it was made clear, if there's a petition signed, we had signatures, it's gonna go to the ballot and let the people of the county vote. It may cost more money, it may be less, who knows? But then it's off all of your shoulders. You could say, hey, the petition was signed, our hands are tied, let the people vote. You wouldn't be sitting here getting scrutiny or anything. I mean, it's, and if someone came to you, you could say, hey, the petition was signed, we, we have to honor that. And go back to all the people that signed a petition, who cares? But it's not on your shoulders. And at that meeting, I thought the county said we were in debt one-point-six million, give or take? Why didn't we take that slush fund and pay our debt off? And start saving for a little bit? And open this up for bids to come and remodel it? I'm almost certain there's a lot of construction companies out there scratching right now. And they'd be happy to come give you a bid for free.
On what design?
Then come up with a design. Hey, prove, prove what you guys can do for us. What, what, what do we really have to change? The roof, fix the roof, the roof's leaking, fix the furnace, the furnace is not working. We could get by. Correct?
It, I'm gonna tell you, you start opening up walls, you start doing any of these fixes, it, it, it brings in other code issues. We've talked about this numerous times. There's other code issues that, that will be presented once we start opening things up and fixing things.
What, what is detrimental that would absolutely have to be fixed in this building then?
Well, my background's IT and I'm gonna tell you, anybody who, who, uh, says our IT room is good, I'll, I'll come, I'll come bad any day.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll echo that even though I don't know-
And that runs our whole county.
Our IT is a mess.
But how much of that has been kept off? Investments in that been held off?
Yeah.
For me, you can justify building this building. You know, that's, that's-
No, I know, I know.
I was in IT too. I was in IT after thirty-two years. I know how to fix a lot of this stuff and why wasn't that done? You know, it's terrible the shape that IT is in.
Correct.
It's been neglected for how long?
No, that, Darryl, as far as I know, that was never an issue brought up before me when we were on. We always kept just doing what we had to do to make it run efficiently. I don't think was ever say, you know, I can't say five years ago, we said, we're not doing anything in IT because we wanna build a new building. That I, that has never come before me. And I've been honest with you people on my thoughts all the time.
But the main reason is when we were at that meeting, and when you guys said the petition, if it were to get signed, be enough signatures, it'll go to the ballot.
Yep.
Then to hear, ah, the next meeting, we came up with something better. We're just gonna override you and do it anyways because we think it's better. That was just the, the misleading, even if that wasn't what you intended to say, it's what was said.
I think you know well enough that two of us were-
I know, and I was here.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody.
Yeah.
I'm just talking to you as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
And I think a lot of people in this room think the same way. It's like, why are we coming to another meeting about it? We already had that meeting and what was said was said. Whether or not you knew the findings or not, at that time, you said it will go to a vote. That's what's frustrating. And then now you're making headline news for Christ's sakes. How does that make you guys feel? Don't it kinda like, maybe we messed up a little bit here or something? Like I say, it's moving forward with the project without the funding. It doesn't happen.
But we're also making headline news on incorrect information too.
Like what, though?
The contracts were approved, Mike. They had the ability to start moving over there.
Sure.
Yes, this is the financial piece of the puzzle. This, that's where I'm-
But if you go to build a house, you could approve the contractor that, hey, this is the guy I'm gonna go with, but you don't get the approval from the bank. That contractor ain't starting. He wants to see approved funding for the project before anything is bought, anything is moved.
Jessica and, and Pete, is this a common deal? It's-
It is.
Come to the mic, yeah.
Commissioners, typically we'd start the process a little bit differently, um, and you'd have some approvals prior to- Um, so, but no, I wouldn't say that it's entirely uncommon to have some of these sort of, some of these tail, um, I would say procedural steps done after a project is awarded. Certainly with, uh, street projects, et cetera, there's a little bit more of the front end of procedural steps that are done from feasibility reports, et cetera, et cetera. So, all projects are done differently, but it's, it's not uncommon for a project to be bid and awarded prior to a bond sale.
Okay, thank you. And with that being said, if this doesn't go through today, what happens?
I think we just heard from Pete what happens.
There's no money to give them.
Well, who do you think that falls off of? Um, everybody here, including us.
Uh, someone jumping the gun a little bit. I mean, there's no funding, sorry. You shouldn't have bought it. You didn't have a check, you didn't have, what's, I mean, how are you supposed to pay for it? Pull it out of the blue sky? I mean, it ain't, sorry, the bank didn't give us the money. It's just, the timing is way off. I, I mean, can you guys say, if you were to go buy anything, can you go pick it up, do anything without having the funding?
Yeah, I mean, I, I tend to agree with you, Nick, because there's-
You can't build a new barn, you can't go-
Somebody that's built a lot of buildings in Benton County and, you know, and you go, you wanna spend a million dollars, they're not starting until your bank says they got the funding.
They're secured funding.
Mr. Chair and Nick, Jessica, could I ask you a question? Is it, is it, or is it not typical that counties have way different financing options than are available to even cities? School districts? There's all kinds of different funding mechanisms. And what really threw the curve ball in here again is the material change to the bid opening. There was never, ever a plan to say, screw the petitioners, no matter what. You, the petition was handed in on the morning of the twenty-ninth, that afternoon we opened the bids. Everybody was shocked, they came in where they came in. So again, to my point about asking for a new committee of the whole, we regrouped and said, what are our options? We're not making things up for financing. We have options available to us as a county board through statute. School districts are the same way, although they're different. Cities are the same way, although they're different. Is that not correct?
Commissioner Johnson, you are correct.
So we, we, we gathered around and said, what are our options here?
Yep.
That was the purpose of that call.
Wait a minute, Scott. I don't ever remember at the committee of the whole that we said we were gonna go to the HRE option.
Well, you were at that committee of the whole, Commissioner Pop?
We discussed it, but it was never brought forward that we were gonna-
No, we had, we had to bring it forward here.
Bring it forward to the board.
And I was totally shocked when that happened, to tell you the truth.
Well, I don't, I guess I understand your disagreement, but I don't know why you were shocked because you were at the committee of the whole where we had consensus to bring it to the board.
No, we did not. We had consensus of discussing it. We never were gonna bring it before the board until that meeting. I cannot remember that, that part of it if I didn't.
I, I, I don't know how else it would have got here without the consensus of the committee of the whole.
Correct.
We didn't just make it up.
And it is in the minutes there.
Yeah, I just-
So-
I wasn't at the full meeting.
But let's go back to the minutes when you guys all said, if we had a petition, it's gonna go to the ballot. That's what's frustrating. And why, that's the problem with this country right now? Why are you guys, or not you, us or the county or whoever's school, why is there double standards? That should be the same for anybody else trying, a private person trying to win money. Why is there double standards for the government? There should not be. That's like the senators and the representatives. Why are they getting a better, they don't have to pay social security, they got a better retirement plan, they have better health insurance. No, that's not how it's intended to be. You should be treated the same as a private citizen. And that's why we have corruption in this country right now. It's gotta come to a stop. And what's happened today is, like I said, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, it's, it's the frustration of, if we get a petition, it is going to the ballot. Like I say, thanks for your time.
All right.
I just have one, cause I was called out, I'll be quick. Pam, you said that again about the five percent, you're looking out for all the people of Benton County, right? When you made your decision?
Yep.
And you said you only had one person contact you with being inappropriate? Did you have any other people call you and contact you or talk to you and say, I really don't think this is a good idea? Because what I see out there and what I hear out there, I mean, they are very angry with your decision. Very angry and very frustrated with the fact. And it's not just a couple people. I mean, I look on Facebook and it's got pictures of you guys all over there saying, these are the commissioners that voted to go ahead with this other funding. So, I don't feel like you're looking out for everybody because if you really took a real hard look and listened to what everybody's saying right now-
Can, can, can we agree that that's misinformation? Because there are, once again, two commissioners that said no. But, but, but all five of us are on there. Can we agree that, that that is misinformation?
There are few, there are few of you, Pam, Steve, Scott, I mean, every, what, everybody wants to know, who are the commissioners that are pushing this through?
Yes, yes.
They're frustrated, they're angry.
But can we agree the information is inaccurate?
What information is inaccurate?
These are the, these are the commissioners that approved this other funding.
Oh, you, you gotta vote today. You vote today.
No, I, I'm talking the past.
Right.
Is it, is it, so, so Mike, you want us to vote to turn the building down and, and to pay all these, uh, fees right now to the-
Do what you gotta do, you got your settlement, mess with your deal. You do what you gotta do.
I, I don't believe that if you, if you'd stop this project today, if, if you do what's right, what, what the people of Benton County are asking you to do. If you do what's right today, you're gonna have an issue with those contractors, I guarantee that. But, that shouldn't be your responsibility. There was no funding for this. Did you write out a check yet for them?
We had reserves.
Well, then, then you spent money without getting the funding. That's not the people's problem. But you now made it our problem. But I'm just saying, you gotta know that there are a lot of people in Benton County. A lot, more than five percent, more than ten percent, probably, anybody that knows about this is upset. They felt that it was underhanded. And it's not fair to say that you're looking out for everybody in Benton County for the forty-five thousand because there are hundreds of people that are saying bad things about this. And that's just the people that talk to me about it. Yeah, I get a handful. Oh, you know what? Yeah, the guy sitting over there, yeah, we should maybe do this because of whatever his reasoning was. Okay, but if you're really invested in this and you really start talking to people, that's what they're saying. So don't, don't throw that out there that you're doing what's best for the county, the people, because that's not what-
Well, that's how I feel. And regardless of that's how you feel or not, and I am, I have no reason to lie to you about any phone calls, emails that I have received. And I had one bad phone call, like I said, that was returned or turned over to the sheriff's department that I did not return the call on.
I'm just saying that- I'm just saying that people that are saying that they don't want this.
Phone calls from people who wanted more clarification, and we agreed to disagree or we agreed to agree. And then the rest of the phone calls and the emails that I received were saying that we're glad you're doing what you're doing.
So, okay, each one of you, more people are for this or against it? Jared? That have talked to you.
That are vocal? In, in here, I would say more people are, well, in, in this room, obviously against.
All across the board, all across the board.
I'm gonna tell you, there's probably 10, 15 people assigned to petition said that they were pressured, and that, that, that point blank told.
I'm not asking you that, I'm asking you, what is your feedback? Your feedback, truthfully, I'm expecting the truth from.
Honestly?
What is the feedback? More that want it or more that don't?
I have heard very little in Sauk Rapids, very little.
Scott?
The, my feedback would be, obviously, that everybody here at these.
No, I mean, now I'm seeing as a whole.
I'm giving you my feedback, yeah, you want the whole, you want the whole, okay? The majority here, obviously opposed. I, I believe I probably received 15 to 20 phone calls. To my recollection, all but one of those were positive. I've, I've, with the exception of one phone call, nobody else called me and said, you guys are nuts, what are you doing, and all that, all that kind of stuff. Now, obviously, we've had that here, and I'm recognizing that, but you asked me that as a whole.
Okay, Steve, what's yours?
So in my district, all my neighbors and everything that came up to me and had a conversation with it, and I laid everything out, they were for the project.
Pam, you, you said that they're for it?
For, like I said, I had conversations with a couple people that wanted more information, and we either agreed to disagree or at the end of the conversation, we agreed. And the rest of mine were, agree, and like I said, I had one phone call that I did not return, and that was reported to the Sheriff's Department.
And Ed, what, what is your opinion?
I've had a couple people that said, you know, do it now, it's not gonna get any cheaper. But for the consensus since March, I've had people that were angry, people that think, you know, we don't need it. I've had hundreds of people that have sought me out to say that, you know, they wanna vote on it, basically.
Yeah. Surprisingly, I, I, I have heard only that they wanted to vote, and I'm talking about hundreds of people, and I'm talking about being in areas where people bring it up to me, birthday parties, at the bar, you name it, people, people called me and actually said, what do you, what's going on? Is this for real? So I'm just telling you that I don't understand how you guys could not have that information. If you're not looking at Facebook, you should maybe look at it.
I wanna go back and, and recognize from our June 10th meeting, it says that, at the close, it said Headley sought out directions on what options the county board wanted to take on this action. There was a general consensus to reject all bids at the June 17th, 2025 board meeting, and put it to a public vote on November 26th. That was the bottom line of the minutes.
That's what's frustrating.
That was there.
Can a special election still happen yet in November?
No, no.
Probably not.
No, I think it's too late. I just wanna make one comment. I appreciate everything that's gone on. You know, if the person's for the building, not for the building, we had people that spoke that are for it. That's, that, that's their right, you know? I'm not for it, I'm not against it. What I find hard to believe is that you tell somebody something and then you don't follow through. Do what you, do what you say, not as, not as other people say. You said that you would put it to a people's vote. Come on, it's about honesty and integrity. You know, if it goes to, it goes to a vote and it goes through, I'm happy. If it goes to a vote and doesn't go through, I'm happy. But you need to honor your word. People's words means a lot, their integrity. You said that if you were gonna get the signatures, that we would put it on a ballot. They discussed the 20 special election. People says, no, that's not a good idea, the 20, to put it on a ballot in '25. He says that we would put it in '26. And then, I guess, I, I guess I'm wrong, so I can agree to be wrong with the HRA. But when you come and bring an HRA from the administrator after the signature's become valid, that's wrong. That is totally wrong. Mr. Headley is wrong by coming up. Even if you guys discuss this HRA bond in the beginning process, you didn't discuss it with us, but Scott says, I missed it. I can agree, I probably missed it. Do the right thing, honor the people's vote. If it goes through, fine. If it don't, that's fine. Just because they're digging, he should've went out there, if he made the decision to the bond person that's here to say, hey, we don't have the funding, we can't dig till after the meeting tomorrow. I mean, it's not, it's not, it's, it's common sense. You, I just, I said enough, and I appreciate everybody's time. Jared, Scott, Ed, Steve, Pam. Honesty, integrity. But somebody brings something up, the county's paying him a lot of money. I would not pay him the money that he's getting to make that decision to come through the back door of the taxpayers of Benton County. And you know what his salary is? You can look it up online. There's no way I would pay somebody that type of money to come through the back door and do this to the public. He works for the taxpayers, he works for you. Yous have a decision to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else that wants to make a comment here before we close the public hearing?
I wanna ask if anyone online wants to, we got quite a few folks online. I wanna ask if anyone online would like to make comments.
Anybody online, online wanna make a public comment before we close the public hearing? Last call for anybody online that wants to make a public comment. We have the final call for anyone wishing to address the county board. Has there been any emails, letters, or anything like that?
No, sir.
Has the departments received any concerns from state agencies, cities, townships?
No, sir.
Agenda?
No, sir.
This is not a township deal. The county board will now have time for, time for questions of the staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is closed, we will not be taking any more comments. This portion is closed. Is there any comments before, board members, before we take action on this item? Anything?
Can I have a question? Ask a question?
Absolutely.
So, in, in, at least what I've noticed from when I've been on the board, is it common practice for this board to give direction to the administrator to look for information or bring information back? Is that not the practice? So, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't, I don't agree with the fact that.
Pam.
That stuff on his own.
You're talking to Mike?
I don't agree with the fact that he does stuff on his own. At least, that's not what I've seen. He's usually directed by this, somebody on this board to do something.
You know.
The whole board that he's directed by.
Yeah.
Years ago, when I first got on the board, one of Monty's common statements was, what are your wishes? And, you know, he's held pretty true to that. I mean, that really surprised me, I guess, a little bit when I got on the board, that, that was one thing that he said several times, you know? It's, it's your decision, what are your wishes? So.
I was asking.
Well, Mrs. Chair, your, your next item is a separate agenda item. It's, it's the resolution approving the redevelopment plan, and Jessica, would you be able to join us back at the podium to cover the resolution?
One moment, please. Mr. Chair, Commissioners? Just to get to, excuse me, one second. So you have a.
Ah, we are behind.
Resolution for your consideration, approving the redevelopment project area and the plan thereof. This resolution has been drafted by TAFT, which again is the county's bond council. So there are a number of different sections that are included within the resolution itself, going over those findings that I mentioned previously, the approval and the adoption of the plan. And then beyond just the board meeting today, the HRA would also meet today to also consider the plan itself. If you do have any specific questions related to the information that is in the resolution that is before you, please let me know, and I'm happy to speak to that.
I think we're, some are doing some reading. Any questions, any? No? I don't think there's any questions if you've read through it. So this is a resolution to approving the redevelopment plan for Benton County Government Center project.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to consider the resolution approving the redevelopment plan for the Benton County Government Center. To approve the resolution. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Do you wanna do a roll call or not?
Sure.
Okay.
It's your call, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Nay.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Thank you.
So now we'll reassess the, reassess the county board and conduct the HRA redevelopment plan. I gotta find the right one. Here we go.
Here we go.
I got it.
Get the agenda? This is the agenda.
Oh, okay, thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Benoit?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinan?
Aye.
Commissioner Pop?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
The agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Motion been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda of number one.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just gonna say to clarify, you're, you're calling for the consent?
Yep, for the consent agenda for item number one. For the, it's to approve the redevelopment housing meeting from July 15th, 2025.
I'll make a motion for consent agenda, item number one, to approve the minutes from July 15th, 2025.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Regular, number three is regular agenda.
Yep, so, so, Ms. Chair, it's, again, just consideration of the redevelopment plan. Now you're sitting as the HRA. Jessica, did you wanna make additional comments on, on this first one?
Not specific to the.
Okay.
Unless you'd like me to go over the same information that we had in the public hearing.
Jessica, I have one question on the, on the bond part. If, if we have a, or when we issue the bonds, are we locked into this interest if, you know, if you listen to Bloomberg and some of them, they can expect interest rates to go down, are we gonna be locked into that higher interest rate?
So, very good question. There is a lot of discussion related to the Fed potentially cutting rates. There's about a 90% chance at this point that there will be two rate cuts this year, potentially three. So what I will say about the target federal funds rate is, is it is an overnight rate, it is not a long-term rate. And the correlation between the federal funds rate and the municipal market information is a little bit different than what you'd see in the stock market, for example, or for treasuries. So with that in mind, I did a little bit of, I ran a couple of scenarios just to kind of see what would happen. So in the, typically what happens, when we do have a lot of confidence or consensus around the fact that there is going to be a rate cut by the Fed, we start to see that information priced into the bond rates ahead of time. And again, being that we're at that sort of 80 to 90% level, we are seeing corrections in the market. To the degree of, on Friday, it was about seven basis points overall, even though we're talking about roughly 50 basis points for the federal funds rate, seven basis points for the bond market. We saw another little bit of a correction yesterday, however, it's about two to three basis points, that's on the front end of the curve, not the entirety of the curve. So what I did is I took a look at potentially dropping the first three maturities by about 25 basis points, which I would not expect to happen. Again, it's an overnight rate, so impacting years 27, 28, and 29 by 25 basis points, highly unlikely. That being said, I did run the scenario because I wanted to see what that would do to the overall interest for the county. So if we were to see a 25 basis point reduction, which I don't anticipate happening, the interest rate would go from 4.51998% to 4.51518%, so a difference of .0048% for the entirety of the bond issue. That savings would be approximately $18,000 over a 20-year time period. The other thing that I would bring up is going back to, we'll look at the most sort of recent moves by the Fed. So back in 2024, in August through December, the Fed dropped that target federal funds rate by about 100 basis points. Over that same period of time, the BBI, which is the bond buyers index for 20-year AA-rated bonds, increased by about 25 basis points. So it was an inverse response to what you would expect. Oftentimes, when people think about the federal funds rate, and I'll give the example of mortgages, if a mortgage rate is 6.5% and the Fed makes a move, people anticipate that that rate is going to drop to 6.25. That is not the case. However, whatever the board wants to do in terms of, do you wanna postpone into September after that first Fed meeting? We're happy to do that. But I would caution against trying to time the market, as again, a lot of these sort of indications get priced into the bond pricing well in advance of when you actually sell the bonds. Does that answer your question?
Exactly what I heard from somebody in my family. Okay.
So again, right now, the, the first matter before you is the, again, sitting as HRA, the redevelopment plan, and we'll, of course, get to the bond matter in your second item. But we'd ask you to, to first consider the, the redevelopment plan.
Motion to approve a res, a resolution approving a redevelopment plan for County Government Center project, excuse me.
There is no resolution, right?
Now we're reconsidering the redevelopment plan.
Consider redevelopment plan.
It states in my, it states. Unless I am wrong. So drop out the resolution approving?
Yeah.
Monty?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
As I'm looking at this, our action request is a motion to approve the resolution approving a redevelopment plan for the County Government Center.
That is correct. Yeah, that is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded to consider the redevelopment plan for the county government. Is there any other discussion on it? Hearing none?
It's all good.
Do we need to do a roll call, or we can just?
It's your chair, I mean, it's your call, Mr. Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye.
So now, Ms. Chair, Jessica can review for us the financing plan and then what's known as the set sale resolution.
Thank you, Monty.
Thank you.
As Monty just mentioned, your next item is the finance plan for the proposed bond issuance. So we are set to sell bonds on Monday, August 18th at 11:00 a.m., and then we would come back before the board and the HRA on the morning of Tuesday, August 19th, for your consideration of award of those bonds. So you do have the finance plan, the cover looks like so. In that plan, I would ask that you turn to, it's listed as page one, it's page 22 of your HRA packet, and that provides the executive summary, excuse me, for the issuance. your HRA packet, and that provides the executive summary, excuse me, for the issuance itself. So of course, the proceeds of the bonds here would be used to finance the County Government Center, and the HRA would then pledge lease payments received from the county for the payments on the facility for the bonds. The full faith and credit of the county is not pledged to the payment of the bonds. However, the county would anticipate levying annually to make that payment to the HRA. The lease payments are subject to annual appropriation by the county. The bonds will mature annually each February 1st in the years 2027 through 2046. What that means for the county is that you would be certifying a levy here in 2025 this fall for first collection in '26 to make that payment in '27. Because again, there's always that lag of certification to collection to the first payment. The estimated interest rate or true interest cost, so different than the average rate, is 4.63. The average coupon that we discussed earlier is 4.51. So that true interest cost factors in the interest, the cost of issuance, et cetera, versus just looking at that coupon. You do have a prepayment option here, so beginning February 1 of 2033, you can call the bonds in, in whole or in part, on that date or any date thereafter. The bonds are subject to extraordinary redemption and prior payment at the option of the HRA in whole at the principal amounts thereof plus accrued interest in the event of damage or destruction of the property and any part thereof. The bonds will be rated by S&amp;P Global Ratings. I can say that the rating report was just published yesterday. Monty and I held the rating call with S&amp;P, went very well, exactly what we were expecting to hear. So the outstanding bonds that the county does have, which is one bond issue, was affirmed at the AA level. These bonds are going to be rated AA minus, and as the board may recall, we talked about that one notch differential due to the fact that there is no GO pledge here. However, the fact that the outstanding rating for the county's bond issues has been affirmed, speaks to the financial position of the county, and I'll, I mentioned this to Monty, but when the rating analyst from S&amp;P called me to give me the information, he described the county's financial position as rock solid in his words. You don't have that rating report, again, just that being that it was published yesterday evening, so we'll provide that to you with the county board packet. But all good news and exactly what we were expecting. The bonds will be considered tax exempt and non-bank qualified obligations. There are certain risks, of course, with the issuance of any and all debt, and we have included the, those risk factors in your packet as well. Type of bond sale here would be competitive, and as I mentioned, that bond sale is scheduled for Monday, August 18th at 11:00 a.m., and then we'll come back before the board at 9:00 a.m. the following morning for your consideration of the award of the bonds. Beyond that, within the finance plan itself, you have an issue overview, so it describes the sources and uses of the bonds, it describes the authority for the bonds as well, so leaning on 469 as well as 465 with that lease structure, the security and the source of repayment, of course, and then the issuing process. We do have the proposed or preliminary debt service schedule that is included in your packet and in your finance plan. As I mentioned previously today, we will not know the exact rate of the bonds until the bonds are sold on August 18th. And if something happens in the market where there's a wild swing, I'll certainly be in contact with Monty, and we can address any need to delay the issuance, again, if the market seems to be off. So with that, you also have a resolution that we refer to as the set sale resolution, and that states the time and the date of the sale itself, and effectively provides preliminary approval related to the bonds. It is not an authorization or an award of bonds, but it is, again, sort of a nod to the staff and also the finance group that's working with you, Bond Council, to continue moving forward for the bond sale.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Jessica, just for clarification on the debt service schedule, I think you explained to Mr. Watercott earlier, this starts out at a 3.3%, and by 2033, when the option to exercise reviewing the rate, we're at that time between 3.8 and 3.9?
Correct.
Is that the right way to look at that?
A little bit different. So, within each bond issue, when you're selling the bonds, you will have an investor that purchases, for example, the 2-1 of 2046 maturity, and they will expect to receive 4.9% on that interest because they're assuming that the bonds are going to be outstanding for 20 years. However, of course, you do have the call date. And whoever purchases the 2-1 of 2045 is expecting to receive 4.85% on their investment with the bonds. So depending on how the investors hold the maturities and which sort of level of maturity they hold, they are entitled to that coupon or stated rate for that particular maturity. So when we say that you can call the bonds in in 2033, it doesn't mean that you've only been paying 3.9%. You've been paying the interest rate prescribed to each individual maturity within the issue itself.
Okay.
And then, of course, when you're calling in the bonds, and you can do that in whole or in part, you can certainly just call in the last maturities because they carry the higher interest rate, if you're not looking to refund the entire series of bonds. So there's a number of different ways of looking at sort of restructuring or refunding the bonds once that call date hits.
Okay, thank you.
So we reviewed the lease bond revenue and consider a resolution authorizing the sale of HRA lease revenue bonds? That's what's before us right now. Jessica, would there be any, would there be any advantage or would it be detrimental to the county to see if we would have a correction in September or whatever they're talking about? Or not?
If you felt strongly that the impact would have, again, that correlation to municipal bonds?
Correct.
Then I would say, sure, you can certainly delay. History has shown us that we don't see that drop, again, on an overnight rate, apply to long-term rates. It does certainly cause adjustments, but when we look at, and again, I'll point to those most recent sort of Fed moves back in '24, in the fall of '24, what we saw as that target rate was dropping, municipal market information was actually increasing. So there's all kinds of other forces that could impact bond rates, which makes it hard to say, even if we are anticipating those Fed moves, which I would again argue that are priced into the bond market already, just given the level of confidence that there will be at least two rate cuts, there are other factors that could impact bond rates, and it could impact them up or down. So unfortunately, if I was able to predict interest rates, I probably would not be standing here today. But that being said, I would never suggest that you try to time the market.
Right.
You issue when you need the money. We, of course, know that the county's gonna use some reserves to get some of these first pay requests out of the way. But if you feel strongly that you want to postpone, we're happy to do that.
Mr. Chair, with the August 19th potential award date, when are funds available?
Let me see here. So we do have a calendar that is at the very back of that finance plan. So the closing on the bonds would be September 17th. So that's when you would have proceeds in hand.
We need a motion or we need something here on the resolution authorizing the sale?
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to set sale resolution authorizing the issuance of the Benton County HRA lease revenue bonds. Do we have to have August 18th in there on that motion or not?
I believe it's in the, excuse me, should be.
I do not have that in front of me.
Yes, that's included on page 34 of the HRA packet, so it's the notice of sale that's attached to the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded to a resolution to authorize the sale of the HRA lease revenue Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I will be supporting this motion. We unanimously accepted the bids and approved the building to start, so that's why I'll be accepting them.
Okay.
Do you like a roll call, sir?
What?
Would you like a roll call, sir?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Benoit?
Yes.
Commissioner Heinem?
Yes.
Commissioner Pop?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Aye.
Thank you.
We have no other matters before the HRA.
We'll adjourn the HRA at 11:38 and re-
Would you like to take a break?
Yeah.
Or keep plowing through?
You need a break?
Plowing through.
Yeah, we need a five-minute break.
Short break, okay.
Two-minute break.[1236.23]
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jessica. Yep.
Good news.
Hi. Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Going over time today.
All right. All right, Ms. Chair, you're ready to be- to resume?
Thank you, sir. Yep. So, um, a number of issues to talk about, more practical logistical operational issues associated with the project. And Pete, of course, is here to- to join in on this discussion. So, I'd like to try to follow the what's on your screen and what's going on now, what's going to happen next couple of months. Also, too, I've asked Pete to share with you, in perhaps a bit of a refresher, categories role as CM. What they do day-to-day to monitor what's going on on the site, to monitor contractor billings, how they scrutinize those and so on and so forth. That kind of cut gives us items one and two, and then we'll just go from there. So, I'm going to turn it over to Pete and let him cover those issues, and then I'll come back.
Good morning, once again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Just to kind of give you a little bit of rundown on kind of where things have at since the approval of the contracts. We have assembled a contractor pre-construction meeting here, I believe it was on the twenty-fifth, which was a Friday. Basically, that's to get all the contractors in one room, sit down. We issue out an overall formal procedure manual on expectations of the job, billings, procedures, and things of that nature. This contract and the entire documents were set up around the AIA Institute, American Institute Architects. So, the entire bidding documents, the entire front end is married together with the construction contracts, the general conditions, Evans' contract, our contract. So, it's one happy marriage under the AIA library. With that being said, behind the scenes, many of the shop drawings, submittals have come through from the contractors. We have an online portal that we had talked about before called Submittal Exchange. So, at the end of the day, every piece of documentation on this will be in digital format, turned over to the county. At the same time, members of the county have current access to that as well, where all the budgets are tracked, et cetera. So, started moving topsoil. Fence went up here on August first, started moving topsoil in advance of doing the soil corrections. We were working with IEA. They were the ones originally with some of the asbestos line items in our conversation with Colin down at the MPC and approached procedure to move through that as fast as possible. So, that's why you saw the topsoil moved. From there, proposal came through from IEA, I think actually this morning during the meeting. And we'll get them on board to do the onsite inspections as we get through that. Once the soil corrections are completed, we will turn around and immediately start digging for footings. We want to get the foundations in and out of the ground ahead of the freeze-up. And I know we're sitting here in early August, but at the same timeframe, too, we know what's coming down the pike. And we want to make sure that we have ample opportunity to get that to kind of mitigate any potential costs with our original milestone schedule. Item number- any questions on site happenings? Item number two Monty has is how contractor billings are reviewed for accuracy and processed. During our pre-construction meeting, we laid out a path where contractors have to put in for an AI pay request once a month. With that being said, we put a review memorandum together, which is a review with our project management team, our onsite person, to make sure that the work in place is in concert with the work being applied for. We also allow for stored material to be applied for as well, with some of the long lead times, the fluctuations in the market, things of that nature. As long as that stored material is insured at a place of its holding, it's allowed to be paid for. It then goes off to Evans' office for signature as well, so the architect will certify the pay application. And then it's off to Monty for a packet for you people to review and approve. That'll happen on a monthly basis. At the end of the day, a couple of weeks back, we had a meeting with Monty, Jackie, and some of the people here, Jeff at the county, to make sure that the process was going to flow correctly with your board meeting dates. I'm just going to quick pass out. It's an example of a pay book that gets put together. You don't have to do a quick pruse through it, but- Little bit of feel for the way these books are put together. At the same time, monthly, they will be recorded into this budget. It's the same format. You've seen our estimates come through on, and of course, the bid tabs. And recorded monthly. The second page of that, each one of the contractors is tabbed, and I just printed one example of Kim and Dirt Diggers. So, at the same time, we are also tracking some of those pre- contracts, submittals, the W9s, the insurance certificates, safety policies, et cetera. One of the big ones is the insurance certificate expiration date, so we've got that flagged within our system. So, knowing next April fifteenth of 2026, we need to be chasing down an updated insurance certificate from Kim and Karen from our office. Is our contract administrator, does a wonderful job of maintaining the budgets and the books, at the same time, tracking all these other submittals, i.e. insurance certificates, et cetera. So... Monthly in-person updates to the county board. At the same time, too, if you would like us to be at the county board on a monthly basis to kind of give you a little bit of a rundown of the project, what happenings are there? Any budget questions that may be posed, we surely could do that. We're more than available. I did bring Jim Omen along with me from our office. Jim will be helping me co-PM this, along with Eric Holland, who will be our onsite person, who will be in the trailer daily. And with that being said, we're more than happy to give the board as many updates as needed. Item number four, job site superintendent. We will have job site meetings scheduled for every two weeks throughout the course of construction. At that meeting, it'll be the trade contractors that are currently working on site, those that are close to working on site. And then we will also have a Zoomer teams invite out to the rest that just want to stay- take tandem with the project. Same time, too, we encourage Monty and Jeff to be there as well, to understand the current happenings, understand what's going on. And at the same time, too, GLTA or potentially an engineering representative would be in attendance as well, just to make sure that those meetings are attended by all. Just to make sure that construction project stays on track and all questions are being answered. And then item number five, I think more from the standpoint of potentially change orders moving forward in order to keep the construction process moving onsite, is to, I call it the hourglass theory. So, that makes sure that we have one person who's delegated by the county to approve change orders as they come up. Not to say that they won't be discussed at the monthly board update, but in order to wait three, four weeks potentially for an action to happen, sometimes might be delayed. Therefore, we're recommending that Monty have a threshold of up to thirty thousand dollars to approve in order to keep things moving if need arises.
Pete, is that normal to have a thirty thousand dollar threshold for change orders for one individual?
You know, we have seen them all over the place. We have seen some counties go much higher in order to keep the process going. We have seen some of them lower. That'd probably be a good average in today's world that we would say would be in the threshold of what we typically see out there. Yes.
These contingency, Mr. Chair, these contingencies are-
The contingencies are a little bit more in place on a remodel, though, versus a new construction. There's less change orders in a- in a brand-new building.
Yes, you have less chances for unknowns. And like I said, a couple of things, and I go back to why we saw a lot of these bids come through. We heard many contractors say these were a very clean set of documents, and it was welcome to hear. I do give my hat off to Evan and his team. Like I said, I think the products were well researched, which we don't a lot of times see. It's already kind of gone through the plan review process with the billing official. Very few items came up within that. And therefore, yes, contingency typically would be somewhat lower.
All right. Thanks, Pete. Why don't we backtrack then just for a moment? So, Pete suggested he could do monthly updates to you all, the entire board. How's that sound? Does that sound okay?
Absolutely. Whatever.
Do you have a preference, first meeting of the month or second meeting of the month? Does it mean?
Whichever one he's going to have the most information on, probably.
Okay.
Whatever works for him.
Whatever works for him. So, once a month, for sure, Pete?
Yep.
Or Jim will be here?
And if something's prudent, he could come-
Come-
Yeah.
Correct.
But yes, yes to that. Okay. Five, what's your thoughts about the change order matter?
With Pete's recommendation?
Yeah.
Well, I- and that's, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I would have to go with Pete's recommendation, just- just for that. But it's up to the board to decide it.
And I'm fine with that, and I assume that's something we could change if we have to.
Yep.
Absolutely. Right.
Yep.
Right. Well, I- my- my goal, Mr. Chair, is absolutely flood you with updates. Anything, I learn something new, you're going to hear it right away. I owe that to you. Right. So, soon as something comes up, I will let you know. Absolutely. Yep. Okay. Thanks, Pete. If I may, Mr. Chair, wrap up on a couple of other things. Well, these are really, I think, described as owner items, FFE, furniture fixtures, equipment, and then tech, signage and landscaping. I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but if I may, let's just take these one at a time. So, let's- I'm going to start kind of at the end and go backwards. So, at some point, we need to put out our furniture to bid. So, to get- to put it out to bid, you need specifications, you need quantities, you know, the design and so on and so forth. So, we're going to need some assistance from some competent professional to come up with a furniture design. Evan from GLT has told me he has some resources he could help connect us to and ideas. So, what I propose to you today is, I'd like the opportunity to sit down with Evan and hear his ideas and so on, and then bring a process plan back to you. In other words, how are we going to get from point A to point B? In other words, knowing we need furniture, to going out to bid. So, I'd like the opportunity to do that with Evan- Evan's input, and then again, and of course, Jeff, too, and come back with a plan for you. So, I should mention, too, Mr. Chair, it's going to be really important that we involve our departments in the furniture of- It's very personal, you know, furniture, your desks and chairs and so on and so forth. So, we're going to make sure we include all of our departments in that discussion about what their furniture needs are. I- it almost, you think it kind of boggles the mind of all the furniture in this- in this building, you know? Chairs, benches, desks, et cetera, et cetera. So, a pretty big project. Tech, of course, we've been conferring with Commissioner Kapinski on the matter of technology. I- I would like to then at some point organize another meeting with Commissioner Kapinski, Steve Stang, of course, Jeff, and maybe bring GLT into that to sort of talk through, how do we go? It's kind of like with FFE, how do we go from point A to point B? At some point, it's got to go out to bid, and presumably, there's going to be multiple bid packages based upon the different aspects of that tech. For example, you've got cams, cameras, you've got wiring, you've got presentation equipment like this. A lot of- a lot of pieces. So, I'll- I'll follow up, and we'll step a meeting, and we'll get that going. I, you know, I'm sure the months will go by quickly, and there's a lot to do between now and the day the door is open on this building. So, I don't intend to just sit on this. I- my thought is, let's get through August and survive August, and then really in September, dive right into it. Dive right into it. Signage, I need to regroup with GLT to understand the signage that's embedded in the project versus the owner- the owner signage. I'm pretty sure the exterior signage is an owner item. So, for example, there's going to be a great sign on the corner telling people what's in this building. And then there's going to be a ground mount sign on the front that says Benton County Government Center. I believe those are owner items, so we'll have to work with the sign then. And fortunately, we have some great signage companies here in the Saint Cloud area that we can turn to. So, and then landscaping. Kind of same thing, we need to- we need to get with Evan and see if he has any suggestions in terms of how to pursue the landscaping design. I just want to let you know, of course, hadn't forgot about these four major owner items, and we'll- we'll get those into high gear into September. And I think that was it. So, just to recap, again, looks like the monthly updates from Pete, and then, oh, let's see here. Oh, I almost forgot. I'm glad I moved my pages. This is actually the original reason that this is on here, with Commissioner Johnson. It's been a long morning. The old government center redevelopment planning. Commissioner Johnson, you had the great idea of maybe, let's try and formalize this redevelopment plan a little more and get it more organized. We've had a number of meetings with various folks on possible redevelopment ideas. Commissioner Johnson, you suggested adding another board member to this group to pursue redevelopment ideas. And then that redev group would bring recommendations back to you. I just want to give you a sense of some things that have been talked about so far, conveyance to the county EDA for disposition, and why would we do that? Well, if you convey the property to the EDA, EDAs have substantially more flexibility as to how you dispose of property. For example, you can negotiate a sale to a private party and attach conditions to that. First, let's just say, for example, you want to make sure this property is used in a good way in the future. You know, you don't want it to turn into some undesirable business. You can attach conditions to that sale. And if the buyer doesn't fulfill those conditions, the property can revert back to the EDA. Not possibly conveying a property to a nonprofit to some ownership, space leased by nonprofit to various service providers, dental medicals, and so on, senior. We, of course, we can't forget the need to retain space of University of Minnesota Extension. And there's also the idea of possibly private redevelopment of this site. I think that's a great idea pursue, to return the property to the tax rolls and help possibly create some private redevelopment here in the city of Foley. So, that's another idea on the table. So, in the name of this, Commissioner Johnson, would there be any of the other board members that perhaps would be interested in being in this group? Or all board- I don't want to exclude anyone, of course. How do you feel about asking another board member to be a part of this- this redevelopment group? And Commissioner Johnson, please add anything you wish.
Yeah, I mean, I think you're right on the money. I think we need at least one other one. You know, it's going to be tough if we do three. We can't do that, but-
I would say just keep it to two.
But whoever's willing, I mean, I think our next thought process, Monty, help correct me, we wanted to include Amanda, obviously.
Yep.
The mayor and the city administrator.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Number of people like that involved in this, kind of a sit-down preliminary idea. So, I don't know what the time commitment's going to be at this point, but it just, for me, it was important to, let's get it rolling because a year and a half's going to go by, and we want to be able to answer some of the questions that were presented to us today about what our plans are.
Well, and if nobody else wants to, I'll sit in on the meetings. That's fine.
Commissioner Benoit is our volunteer.
If no one else wants to step up and do it, that's fine.
I haven't got the time.
I, if you want to do it, I can be an alternate.
I mean, I- and I could, too. I was just going to go that-
Yeah, maybe we just, if one of us can't make it, we can reach out.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Don't have the next meeting scheduled, but we'll- we'll work on that soon. We'll work on that soon. Okay. I think that's all on this one. I believe, Mr. Chair, the next item, correct me if I'm wrong, is the EDA recommendation. Is that next?
Yep.
Yep. Yes. And hopefully, Tessa has stayed with us.
Through it all.
She-
Is not.
Not here. I know she had a meeting at eleven.
Do we want to table this?
About, how about you move on to other items, and we'll come back when Tessa joins?
On the right of the left.
Okay.
Yeah.
You've got the next two items, sir.
This is like the old days. We used to go past lunch and into like one, two o'clock. Yeah.
I'm glad you're excited.
Yes, sir. So, okay, I believe the next item is the discussion about a private Minnesota Paid Family Medical Leave Plan. So, as you may recall, the board authorized us to participate in a- in an RFP seeking bids on a private paid family medical leave plan. PFML. I call it Minnesota Paid Leave. That's easier. And you did with this company called Integrity Employee Benefits. I included in your packet, Mr. Chair, a summary of those bid results. As someone pointed out earlier, the, I think it was Nathan, right, that the state rate is point eight percent, point eight-eight percent of payroll. Only one respondent offered a rate lower, MetLife, point seven-nine. And if you went with the point seven-nine rate, it would save the county about twenty thousand dollars. We've been asking area counties, or at least anyone who'll care to respond, who might be taking the state plan versus the MetLife plan. It's about fifty-fifty. State plan, I see here, Aiken, Metro Bus, Douglas, Sherburne, MetLife. It's Minker, Wright, Becker, and Malak so far taking the MetLife plan. So, I know a lot of counties and cities are considering the MetLife plan, and it seems like a lot of folks are kind of on the fence. Seem kind of reluctant to commit. This document, again, was prepared by folks from Integrity Employee Benefits, and you can see, they provided some analysis or thoughts about the state plan versus the MetLife- the MetLife plan. So, Mr. Chair, I maybe just kind of, if I may, cut to the chase, is it is true that the MetLife plan, at least in the short term, would offer some savings? Here's my worry. I believe if we choose a private plan, then in essence, it becomes our plan. It becomes the county's plan, and we take ownership of it. And I think then that puts us in the role of doing many things. If an employee applies for benefits and is denied, they'll probably look to us to advocate for them to fix it. If- if- if the- if MetLife, for example, is slow in processing claims, employees will look to us to fix it. So, I- I'm reluctant to add additional responsibilities onto our already very busy HR staff to serve in that advocacy role. So, and I know for Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Heinon, we discussed this in our negotiating committee. I think you heard those sentiments from Susan Hanson, our labor attorney. The concerns about taking that kind of ownership. You know, some may predict that the state plan will be very slow. We don't know. No one knows. It's possible the MetLife plan could be very slow. For example, if many employers choose it, all of a sudden, there's going to be a lot of employers just staying up on MetLife, enrolling employees. It could slow them down, too. So, I- I don't place a lot of value on all those predictions about fast or slow or otherwise. So, if the county does choose the state plan, you can get out of it after a year and go to possibly a private plan. I should always mention, though, Mr. Chair, is that we can never ask employees to pay more than one-half of what the- we can never ask employees to pay more than one-half of what the state plan costs. So that's always gonna be the benchmark. So let's just say, for example, you know, you wanna go with a plan that's even more expensive than the state, can only charge employees half of what the state plan costs. That is always the ceiling. So at this point, Mr. Chair, again, I, I, I think my, my, my recommendation is, is to, is to go with the state plan. And, uh, and for the reasons I just described earlier.
Okay. I, I would tend to agree with Monty after listening to Susan Hanson. It seemed like she was really reluctant to take on a new plan. Like Monty said, she doesn't know, you don't know what your county staff is gonna have to do where the state plan, you know, it's, it's on their book.
Mr. Chair, and, and I would agree. And it's really about the liability upon time that the county employees would have to spend on the private one versus the state. The state, you send it into the state, now it's on the state. The state created this thing. Now it's on the state.
Currently on, right?
No, there ain't any.
There ain't none yet.
Oh.
No.
Mr. Chair, um, Monty, this can be reviewed after a year though?
Excuse me?
This can be reviewed after a year?
Yep, yes.
Cause like, if you look at the MetLife items, like for their rate guarantees, they tie other things to it. Like you have to have other insured products. Short-term, long-term life, dental, vision, supplemental health.
Right, they did condition upon, if you want the one-year rate, you have to also allow them to market their sh- it's either short-term or long-term disability plan. If you want the two-year rate guarantee, I believe you have to mark, yeah, they'll have to market two plans, two plans.
Right.
Right, yeah. So they tied some conditions to it. Yep, for the two-year, it's, it's short-term disability, long-term disability, life, dental, vision or something. Two of those lists, you'd have to allow them to market those to our employees. Yeah.
But again, we could review it in a year.
You can, yep. You know, there's been lots of dire predictions about the state plan. Well, all the high utilizing organizations are gonna go to the state. The state's gonna take two months to respond to claims. We don't know that. So I guess time will tell. Time will tell.
State.
So I guess, Mr. Chair, if you're inclined, I'd look for a motion. If you're inclined to, to, my recommendation would be to, is to go with the state plan.
I'll make a motion to go with the state plan.
Second.
What's been made, second to go to state plan, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Thanks, Monty.
Uh, well, Mr. Chair, I think my last, let's see, let's see if Tessa's joined us yet.
You know, just in, in light of the employees, do you think we should?
Yeah.
You know, Mr. Chair, I, I do agree. Thank you, Commissioner Gopinski. It would be nice to move on to public health right away and get them here and out of here.
Galerie Sessa.
We'll get ahold of Tessa.
County Board Meeting and turn to public health.
I'll call the Benton County Community Health Board to order. Roll call, note that all commissioners are here. Approve or amend the agenda, is there anything to add to the agenda?
Courtney, is on that presenter's chair. Sorry. We'll get you there. Let's see here. Wait, you got it? You can take it from there?
Yeah.
Got it.
Is there? Yeah. Go right ahead.
How do you share it with, uh?
Yeah, sure, we'll go ahead and open up, open up the.
Yeah. So, I'm not really actually that good at this. It's about time I got good at it. Let's see here.
Courtney, is there anything you need to add to the agenda?
So you go down here and you go share.
No.
And then I think you go.
I was gonna ask to flip-flop the order, if that's okay, just for time.
Uh, flip-flop.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's minor. So nothing else to add to the agenda then? Okay, need a motion, please?
So moved.
We're sharing, uh.
Okay, got a motion. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Number two, the consent agenda, item one, what would you like to do with that?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second by two members. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries. Courtney, the floor is yours, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. That's okay. We didn't know that that was, uh, gonna take a little longer than anticipated. So, uh, thank you for, for letting us flip-flop this. So, I'm here for Jaclyn today. Um, the first thing I wanted to, um, go over is just, um, a consideration for approval. So Medica has announced, um, an upcoming funding opportunity for rural health grant. Um, it's for addressing the needs and social determinants of health, uh, in the rural communities. Um, Benton County Public Health Staff would like to explore the potential funding source to potentially expand, um, around dental health. Um, as we previously identified dental access as a challenge within our Benton County and wider community. To be eligible for consideration of funding, an application must be submitted by August twenty-ninth of this month. Uh, Medica will review the applications made, um, and then make a decision by early December. Um, the funding awards are up to a maximum of ten thousand dollars per grantee. That will be considered. Uh, there is no match, uh, within this. Um, so I'd like to call Tessa up here quickly just to, um, explain a little bit how those funds could be utilized. Tessa?
Hi, my name is Tessa, I'm Regional Dental Coordinator. Um, so as Courtney mentioned, we are looking to apply for Medica's Rural Health Grant. Uh, the purpose of the grant is to fund community-led solutions that address health equity in rural communities. And dental health is one of their priority areas when considering who to give this grant to. So as Courtney mentioned, each grantee can be awarded up to ten thousand dollars. Um, we would look to ask for that full ten thousand dollars. If awarded the grant, we plan to use the grant to fund mobile dental clinics to get them in rural communities that lack access to dental care. Uh, we would be funding their non-reimbursable, um, services such as like mileage and drive time. The grant application is due August twenty-ninth, Medica would make a decision in early December. Um, if awarded, we would return back for contract approvals and the grant cycle would start January first of twenty-twenty-six.
Mr. Chair, quick question. Do you have an idea about how long it would take the grant writer to do this, to put this together?
Um.
Rough, is it a half a day project or take you a week or how does that work?
Maybe a week, just to like get everything written. Some of the answers are like long answers of like seven-hundred-and-fifty words.
Okay.
Um, I think that's the longest, like, question.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? What would we like to do with this action?
Yeah, we would like to, um, consider, um, have you guys consider approval for Benton County staff to explore funding and submit the application, um, and send that in by the due date.
And there was no county match, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Board, what would you like to do?
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. And then, um, next up, I would like to introduce Kevin. He is our Community Health Specialist Intern. He is currently, um, working on his Community Health Bachelor's Program at St. Cloud State University. Um, he started with us in early June and actually is done next week with Benton County. Um, the project he is working on, it's timely that we have this meeting, um, before his last day. So we wanted to get him here and invite you guys to, um, highlight the work that he has done with us. We also, um, wanted to just highlight that we were approached by Pam Weisner, who is here in the audience with us. She is with the, um, Benton Economic Partnership. So she had approached us and asked, kind of came to the, uh, to us with a need for AEDs in the community and just asked if public health could help with any, uh, community education surrounding this. Um, so we're fortunate to have a highly skilled intern to work on this. Um, so I will pull, um, Kevin up here to give a little bit of background and what he's been working on. And then also I was a little bit bummed that Tim had to leave us. I was going to also highlight, he did a really cool, um, article in the paper too on Kevin in this project. So we just really appreciate, uh, the partnership with Tim and Pam as well. So, uh, Kevin?
Okay. Members of the board, uh, members of the public who are currently watching this, I thank you for allowing me to address you, um, today. My name is Kevin Piney. I am a public health intern. I am current, as Courtney was saying, I am a community health specialist intern, earning my bachelor's degree at SESU. I am also a paramedic with Mayo Clinic Ambulance and a lieutenant on the Rice Fire Department. I'm qualified as a BLS, ACLS, PALS and PERS instructor. I also teach Stop the Bleed through the Rice Fire Department. So I've, uh, I've been asked to, um, as part of my internship to, um, shadow many programs that were, utilized here by Benton County. Uh, but most of my time has been dedicated to, uh, my, uh, my capstone project. It was a project to, um, empower the people of Benton County, especially in the rural areas, to not only learn hands-only CPR, but to utilize publicly available AEDs. The objectives of this project, again, were to get people more familiarized with hands-only CPR and AED use. Parts of this county are very rural. As a paramedic with Mayo Clinic Ambulance, I understand that there are times that ALS-equipped ambulances, having extended, um, transport time to scenes. That being said, we do have, uh, outstanding first response agencies such as Foley Fire, the Benton County Sheriff's Department, Rice Fire and the Sock Rapids Police Department, as well as the Sock Rapids Fire Department. But those agencies are BLS-only. And they also have their own calls that they have to respond to. Part of this project, um, is to highlight the fact that, uh, the out-of-hospital cardiac arrest chain of survival depend on, depends on the, uh, depends on the bystander. So activation of the emergency response system or dialing nine-one-one. High-quality CPR, which includes chest compressions and defibrillation or the use of publicly available AEDs. During this course, um, of, um, teaching members of the public, um, were two main areas that we have focused on. It is, uh, hands-only CPR and, uh, AED use. Hands-only CPR means that we are just performing chest compressions, we are not giving ventilations. Ventilations are important, but moving blood around the body is much more important. This is a two-step process. First, we're gonna contact the nine-one-one system and then we're gonna push down hard, fast, center of the chest. When I say hard, fast, I mean we're gonna push two inches at least into the center of the chest on adults at a rate between one hundred and a hundred-and-twenty beats per minute. Um, if you're familiar with the Bee Gees' song Staying Alive, that is between a hundred and a hundred-and-twenty beats per minute. Along with doing hands-only CPR, we're also, um, getting more, people more comfortable with the use of automatic external defibrillers or AEDs. Um, I have spoken to many of my students before they have taken this course and one of the things that they are nervous about is using AEDs because these are unfamiliar devices. These are devices that were meant for people who don't have advanced medical training. They work by analyzing a heart rhythm in somebody who is suffering a cardiac arrest. There are only two rhythms that this monitor will shock, V-fib and VTAC. These are the only two, uh, rhythms that require a, uh, non, I'm sorry. A non-synchronized, uh, defibrillation. Or it just gives a really large amount of electricity to the heart. What this device does is, um, essentially shuts off the heart and then hopefully it starts beating normally again. To use this device, all you have to do is, one, dial nine-one-one. Two, open the device, turn it on and then follow the instructions as the device starts talking to you. Um, there are also pictograms to tell you how to place the electrodes onto the patient's chest. And then the rest is, uh, having the monitor talk to you. I do teach other interventions during this course of training. Um, these are interventions to help prevent cardiac arrest. They are, um, the use of epinephrine to reverse anaphylactic shock, the use of naloxone to reverse opioid, um, overdoses and compression techniques to stop life-threatening, life-threatening bleeding. I am sorry. These items are merely gone over, they're not gone into depth. There are other courses that I do teach that are available to the public that are either low-cost or free, um, that go further into this, uh, into these subjects. Impact of this course is we have reached dozens of, um, people of Benton County, many of which are youngest members of the community. I have been approached after each one of these, uh, training events and have been told that, um, people feel more comfortable to step up and act in the case of an emergency. I thank you for your time, um, and I am open for any questions that you may have for me.
Any questions, Board? Mr. Chair Gopinski, you're well aware of all this?
Well aware of this, just retired from the Sock Rapids Fire, so.
Well, thank you, Ken, for your.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good experience.
Yep, truly appreciate it.
It's kind of a welcome and goodbye.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, truly appreciate it.
That is all I have today. So again, thank you for, um, letting us highlight some of these good things that we're doing and our partnerships with, um, the Benton Economic Partnership, um, as well as having this intern as well. We've been able to do a lot of things in the community, a lot of positive impact, um, with young, young and old. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney, I'm sorry we kept you here so long. With that, I'll adjourn the, uh, Community Health Board at twelve-twenty-five and turn it over to the Board Chair.
Okay. Back to you, Monty, or if you can get Jessica or Tessa online?
Thank you.
Tessa has arrived.
You're all right, our name tags don't mean anything.
So Tessa, I have a question for you. Do you want me to go, do you want me to go through the presentation? You just tell me when to change pages or are you gonna do it? How about if I, how about?
If you let me share it, otherwise, Monty, I was just gonna go through the jobs to review if you wanna.
You know, I tell you what, it's just quicker if I, if I put it up.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, uh, let's see, I'm, stop sharing, stop sharing. I have it here saved. So again, we're here to present your two of our class and count maintenance program. Okay, so which page did you let me go to, Tessa?
You can just go to the slide eight where it has the jobs to review while Monty does it. I'm just, the PowerPoint.
I'm there, I'm there, I'm there.
Okay, PowerPoint's available, you can go on it. I know you guys have had a long meeting. This process is the same as last year. I just wanted to share those jobs that were reviewed are on pages eight and nine. Again, our job is to look at the market of all jobs, the wages every year and we only look at a third of the job descriptions with the employee and the supervisor to look at those classifications. So that process is the same as it has been, uh, in the years past. So Monty, if you would go to slide eleven, it just shows the findings. I just wanna make sure we have time to discuss and I.
I am there, I am there.
It basically is your current grid is calibrated at about three percent under-market average minimum and four under-market maximum. Your wage spread, like thirty, from the min to the max where the market's thirty-nine. Few jobs are deviating from that market average, meaning the system is doing what it was supposed to do. If you go to slide thirteen would be my recommendations for grade changes, for the one year twenty-twenty, twenty, twenty-five, uh, based on changes to the job description, in discussing things with employees and or supervisors through the forms. So there aren't a lot of changes, but there are some, um, changes that go through this. If you wanna, about any of these in particular?
Pause there for a moment, any questions or thoughts about these particular positions? So, and. And may, if I may, I'm sorry, what's wrong?
Christine said that the slides aren't being shared.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I didn't. Um, they're in the board packet.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair, in regards to the auditor treasurer, did I see a reduction?
Yeah.
It is because that position no longer will be supervising.
That was a decision made by the auditor treasurer.
That's the assistant auditor.
Yes, thank you. Assistant auditor treasurer, okay.
I'm sorry, Monty, what was your comment to that?
I said that that decision was made by the auditor treasurer.
The decision?
That supervisory change, yes, right, yeah. It's well within her discretion, of course. Tessa, if I can ask you a question, so, and you may have answered this before. These recommended changes, are they reclassification changes or market changes or both?
So, we look at the market. If a job deviates, we do look at the job description to see if something's wrong with it, if it needs to be reviewed or uncertain thing. But these are based on classification changes, meaning that they change their job description and/or something has changed within it that would warrant a classification change. We basically use the market to make sure things are flowing. If there's something that deviates, we'll pull it in and say we should look at it sooner. But this was more just based on the job description, so the classification change.
Thank you, thank you, Tessa. Shall we move on then to the career ladder recommendations?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Monty. And this is a discussion that is, I hear a lot about at the county. So, employee survey illustrated there's an interest in career ladders, there's a benefit to career ladders. But I only received two requests in this grouping, so we can discuss how we better communicate that or involve it. But in these jobs, one was the GIS, and there is only one person in that position. It's not a multiple incumbent position. So, in that case, we just look at the job description and make those changes because you're not creating a career ladder for one person. The other one was the appraiser, and you can see the positions that are impacted by that. So, appraiser one through three, and then the deputy assessor would be grade 12.
Could share, Tessa, could you share with the board the underlying certifications that led you to recommend the career ladder for appraisers? What was, what's going on behind the scenes in terms of those certifications?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, again, when I say career ladders, I always say is it market warranted, meaning that it's really hard to recruit or retain position? Is it something that we can measure? And in this case, the licensure is a big thing. There's a big licensure change from CMA, AMA is SAMA. This allows them to move through as they get those licensures. It also allows the hiring pool to be bigger. So, when you hire, you can actually post for all three and just get one candidate that would fit in their grade by their ability to do work and their competency.
Thank you, Tessa. I think this is a great comparison, for example, with engineering technician, where you've got, as those individuals obtain additional state certifications, they can move up. And this is exactly the case with this, where, and remember if grade appraiser two is CNA or AMA, I think it may be AMA, and I think appraiser three is CNA. And then if you get to grade 12, that's when you have to be a quote SAMA, and that's the highest certification that you can attain as an appraiser is SAMA. So, and I believe appraiser one is kind of like a recruit trainee where you don't have any certifications. But then you can set yourself on the path to get those certifications, so.
Mr. Chair.
I think, again, it's a great example of where career ladders make a lot of sense.
Quick question, Tessa or Monty, how, I see you say DDA received two requests. Can you briefly take me through the process of how people are requesting a career ladder?
In this case, when they were reviewing the job, they said we'd like this one to be considered for a career ladder. In the GIS, there's only one person, so you don't really create a career ladder. You change the job description to match the duties that they're doing and responsibilities. And in the appraiser, it was one that we, they requested, and then we met with them, and I said, this is how other counties do it, this is how I would see it, and we created the jobs, and they agreed with it. Other departments could ask for it, either through this process or if it's something they want to do sooner, I think they could talk to HR and we can start that process sooner if we needed to.
Okay, thank you.
Miss Chair, I know this, you may recall, like last year, several classifications were chosen for review which had many employees in it, for example, eligible specialist, social worker. This year, the group is much more single incumbent positions or maybe just a few folks. So, it's kind of a different group of positions as compared to last year. So, that makes some of the, you don't see as many career ladders coming out of it. So, Tessa, are there any other comments you'd like to make for us?
Nope, that's all I had. I know it's really short and condensed. There is a full PowerPoint in the packet.
It's in the packet, for sure, yeah. So, you may be wondering, Mr. Chair, you know, what would be the cost of implementing this year's recommendations? I do have a number for you. $42,511. I should mention, though, is last year's class comp cost was $155,510. So, again, this year's cost, $42,511 if you would implement the grade changes and the career ladder.
Well, we're on the process of, but I'm doing them all. I mean, I think we've got to be fair to fair.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Right, so the final third would get reviewed the next year.
Correct.
Commissioner, or Mr. Chair?
Tessa, one of the things that we've been hearing quite a bit is a lot of times that when they send in for a review of a position, if they don't put down the correct, like in other counties, it's listed differently what their job duties are, it could be a different title. How are you researching that when it comes down, comes down to, let's just say, a technical analyst might be a case analyst over at another county, and I'm just throwing those out there as.
Sure. Yeah, so that's a good question. So, there's a couple of things that are going on there. One is when I'm doing the job description, I'm only looking at the jobs within Benton County. So, I'm looking at internal equity within the county. I try to get the job description right first, and then I base it on internal equity of where it fits in with the division, the department, and the overall county. Then, I look at the market and try to find good matches with that position, regardless of the title now that I have a position. So, I would say that I do look at the position first because I want to make sure it is right to Benton County. Not everyone values their positions the same. They have different service levels. There are many career ladders, there are many assistants and that. So, not every county looks the same, so you can't just pull titles. So, that's kind of how I address it. I always say your pay for a position is based on three things. Updated job description, looking at the internal equity, does it make sense within the county? And then the third one is market competitiveness and pay philosophy set by the board.
Thanks, Tessa. Would you be able to send something, like just a statement of how this goes? Kind of how you just explained it? Because I think it might be good to put in our Benton County, what's?
Handbook?
No, the committee.
Oh, culture team.
Culture team, yeah, there you go.
Sure, I mean, and the other thing is we have an appeals process. So, if I don't get it right, that's when we have that conversation. Hey, I don't think you considered this, or you did. So, it's not just trying, some people will say, well, I can't get my classification because I don't know how to write the job description. That's not your job, that's my job. But if I don't understand it, that's your problem. Then you need to help me understand what I'm missing or what warrants it. And with that said, we may still have a disagreement, but that's why we have the appeals process, so that I'm understanding the employee, the supervisor, and then the whole organization.
Okay, thank you. Well, unless there are no other questions, we're looking for your thoughts and possible motion on.
Motion to adopt 2025 year-two class and comp maintenance program recommendations.
Second. Well, the main, second is to adopt the DDA's class and comp 2025 study. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos, carried. Thanks, Tessa. Thank you, Tessa.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. It's going to spend the next hour on the monthly financial report. No, we're not. This is here because it was requested that at mid-year, I put the monthly financial report on as a regular agenda item. So, I'm being responsive, of course, towards desire, have this. So, June's a good time to take a snapshot of where things are at. You see this format, and I will tell you, it's been real challenge to get this in your packet every month. There was so much going on, it's been really tough. I do my best, but sometimes there just isn't time. So, the goal is monthly. So, this is through the end of June, and I try and footnote, Mr. Chair, you can see a number of footnotes which explain what may look like an unusual pattern. Most instances, if you see something that appears to be way under budget or way over budget, it's often a timing issue. For example, in January, we have to pay our entire annual MCIT premiums for workers' comp and property casualty. That's $500, $600,000 in January. There's, you know, a few here actually, though, which aren't, can't be explained by timing. For example, in corrections, we're going to probably way overspend the juvenile boarding budget. That has just really taken off, and.
In a negative way.
Yes, negative.
That's going to be over, and I imagine in criminal justice, you probably are talking about that. That's going to be way over. Backing up to interest earnings, we're going to collect way more interest earnings than we budgeted. And that's great news for our fund balance at the end of this year. Let me go back up. So, for example, we budgeted $800,000, and already we posted $1.5 million through the end of June. So, there was an oddity with January, where actually it was 2024. Interest earnings were posted in January, so it's a bit overstated. But nevertheless, though, we're going to collect substantially more than was budgeted, which again adds to fund balance. So, those are a couple I wanted to point out as, again, they're not explained by timing issues primarily. Moving on, I always include this summary of what we call restricted revenue funds. These are not budgeted. So, when we talk budget here, you know, in a couple of weeks, this is off-budget, so to speak. Basically, departments should only spend what's available to them in this fund. And these are all basically either legally restricted or board-restricted to specific functions. And a lot of history behind all these that appear here. You can see the board contingency accounts there, there's $114,000 left in the board contingency. The largest part that makes up this fund ten is the solid waste contingency. There's $3.4 million sitting in the solid waste contingency. Of the $5.6 million balance, $3.4 million is the solid waste contingency. That's at $10 special taxes. And a couple of other really large ones, SCORE grant. We have almost $400,000 sitting in the SCORE fund. There's $863,000 sitting in 911. Again, that's a special surcharge on your cell phone bill. So, again, a lot of history behind all these, but bottom line is they're restricted for specific purposes, either legally or through board action to make them restricted. We also follow very closely our self-insurance trust fund, our self-insurance fund. What really, you can see, for example, we see the premiums up above that the county pays, the employees pays, we get some reinsurance reimbursement, and then medical claims, pharmacy claims, dental, and so on. And we track the balance in this fund. One thing that's really a good development that we're seeing is improving reserves. So, for example, end of June, we had $1.6 million cash sitting in the self-insurance fund. That's only about $58,000 short of our, of our fund balance goal in the self-insurance fund. So, that's good news. We gradually built that reserve. Our goal there is to have a reserve equal to six months of fund expenses. So, we're getting really close. That's good news. Does that have been diminished substantially a couple of years ago?
Right. Do you think that that should be raised considering from where we started, Monty?
Yeah, that's a good question, I think, for MMA is going to be visiting you soon with the recommendation. I would suggest we ask that question of.
I would too, because, you know.
You know, how they feel about reserve levels? If they feel we should be a little more aggressive and have a higher one? She'd be the best judge of that.
All indication would indicate we should.
Yes, I agree.
Should, especially with winter and everything.
Well, and just where we've went since we established this.
It's a balance, and of course, you have, you have two forms of reinsurance. You've got one that captures overall total liability, and then you have reinsurance that's called specific for individual cases. So, with us, once someone hits $75,000 of bills, that specific kicks in and starts paying for it. So, I know over the years, we've actually increased that specific threshold from, I think we started at 50, and now we're at 75. That's, you know, that's your coverage, your protection, you know, so why you don't necessarily need an enormous balance, cash balance, because you've got reinsurance to insulate you from those huge losses. And, Mr. Chair, that is it. Happy to continue answering lots, answering more questions about the.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Where are we sitting with the overtime versus comp time?
Haven't looked recently. Haven't looked recently, don't have an answer for you. I will put that on and make a note, and we'll report to you soon on that, yeah, yeah. Haven't looked at that recently. Any other questions about the monthly financial report? All righty, I think it's time for Mr. Chris Byrd.
All right, let's talk about everybody's favorite, road construction, right? Well, the first item I have on the agenda is kind of comes as some bad news. So, we recently was informed that our most recent RACE grant, well, the new administration calls them build grants, was denied. So, this is the third time applying for federal money for the Mayhew Lake Road project and maybe most notably roundabouts at the crash intersections, or those intersections that we have crash history at. So, that's part of this agenda item, just to inform you of that, that, and I did get the email, and that's attached to your agenda packet, you know, the Dear John or Goodbye, sorry you didn't get the grant letter. They are advertising that they'll reach out to me in August sometime this month to set up those debrief meetings, and some of you have participated in the past. They don't send out meeting notes from those meetings, so it just relies on us to jot down notes as they're talking on why the criteria was good or was not good, and I anticipate we'll do that again, try to set up one of those debrief meetings to see if we can learn anything more. But to couple that, we keep pursuing federal money for that project. I wanted to bring up the question about the Transportation Alliance Washington DC fly-in that comes up in September every year. A few of you commissioners have gone in the past. This year, it is September 16th through 18th. They've got an agenda here for Tuesday and Wednesday. In the past, the Transportation Alliance has tried to schedule meetings for us with our delegation. More often than not, though, those meetings are kind of group meetings. We don't get one-on-one meetings with delegation or even with their legislative aides. It's usually with other counties, and we end up forced to talk about general transportation funding, not really specifics to our county. So, in light of that, I think that's something that we should discuss this morning if we want to send some folks out there to DC.
It is definitely still good to be out there.
We hear it at the state level, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And I think that's very much true in the federal. You think the state's got a lot of things that they get hammered about, you know, fund this, fund that. You multiply that by 100 at least for the federal, so. Our state lobbyist, Larkin Hoffman, also has a federal person too. We're not contracted right now with them, but I have reached out and had a conversation with them about considering an hourly contract to have them specifically work on setting up some meetings with us that day that we're out there, if we do choose to go out there. There, and that's, that proposal is included in this packet as well. It's kind of a steep rate, it's $400 an hour for her services. Megan Knight is her name. I do know our state lobbyist, Grady, is planning on being out there the same week. Shisago County is one of their clients, so they're going out there with Shisago County. But on a phone call I had last week with Grady and this Megan out in DC, she has time and capacity to work on stuff for Benton County if we so choose.
I would say the nice thing about this is not only could they get their one-on-ones through Larkin Hoffman and their associate out there, but then you take. but then you take place in the, uh, uh, the group setting as well. They see you a couple of times, then I know Commissioner Pop, you're going out there for something in in August or September. And then I'll be going out with APO in October, November. So we keep hitting on things. They, they, they see us, and it, it's get, it gets noticed.
We, we found that out firsthand, just from the first year of going out there, you know, and every year after that.
Any cows?
It is making a big difference.
And I think one of the things that we've got to really hammer our next ones out there is we've applied three times for this grant.
Yeah.
And nothing has changed. Yet the, it, the criteria comes back every time because somebody else judges it. And we've went up, up, and up each time.
That seems to be, if you've talked to a few other counties that have done it, three times is not a lot to be rejected. I mean, you're talking seven, eight, nine agencies have applied.
But we, we check most of the boxes when it comes to safety and, you know, a, a regional thoroughfare. I mean, to me, I don't understand their criteria at all.
But as you look at the dollar amount, Commissioner Pop, you know, these other counties, they're in the hundred million dollars, okay? I keep seeing, we're only asking for three.
I know. I don't know if that makes a difference or not, I know.
Some of those projects, their contingency would cover our project.
Right.
Exactly, you know. I, I know I cannot make it this year because I was, I, I got lucky again this year, so. But in the years past, it was very, very enjoyable.
I think Commissioner Johnson was going to. Last year.
Yep. So I think there's two things, if there's a consensus to send Commissioner Johnson, that's one.
And yourself.
Yeah, it's gotta be both.
I, I'm happy to do that. I, I do, I'll let you know, I prefer to go out there with, with one of you. I think that's much more effective. They respond well to, to you and the pressures of facing the public and standing in front of the public. I think that goes a long way. They, they know that you get it. So that's one thing. Is there any consideration to using the services of Megan Knight out in D.C. to set up some stuff?
How many hours would it be? Is it like a eight-hour day?
So, good question. I did ask that question. She said, well, you know, that day that we're out there, she would be with us and, you know, showing us where to go and go and, you know, getting us into those meetings and those buildings and where to go. That's eight hours there, but she said to prepare for fifteen to twenty hours of prep time.
Oh, wow.
So that's, that's the caveat. So it, it's
Fifteen to twenty hours of prep time?
Yeah. So that's what she said. It could be, you know, big number that she can come in under.
So eleven thousand dollars?
Yeah. So I had a similar, similar reaction on the phone, and she picked up on that. She said, well, if you're more comfortable, maybe discuss with the board as a maximum number, you know, not to exceed. If, if that's more comfortable, I could throw that back at them, and then if she's approaching that number, trying to coordinate schedules and make phone calls and stuff, we can have additional discussions, but, um.
I don't, I don't know. You know, you've been out there a couple of times with APO.
I'm wondering if we couldn't utilize, utilize David Church to get us some one-on-ones out there. We're, we're a part of the APO area.
Yeah, correct.
Now, once you're in there, we can't stop you from talking about other things.
Well, right. And the other part is that
That's generally what happens.
It seems like, you know, there was a lot of, well, we, they were, when they were due, they were on call for some floor hearings.
Yeah, that's right.
So a lot of them weren't there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if they're, they're on the call for, you know, for a floor hearing, you're not gonna see them anyway, you know?
Well, it seems from what I've read, I mean, you guys tell me if I'm wrong, if you take a chance with, uh, um, Minnesota group, you're just that, you're taking a chance.
Yeah, but you get counties like, so we, we had a chance to be one-on-one with Senator Smith's aide, right? And we agreed to let Cano, Candy Ojai County come in with us.
Anna, right?
Anna.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we agreed to let Candy, because we were the only ones. We could have had a one-on-one, and we were nice and left them because they were waiting, and it was getting late in the day. And it worked out fine to, to some degree.
Yeah.
You know, but we've also had one-on-ones sent when I was out there, Jared, with you, you know, with Tina and with, uh, Klobuchar.
Then we had the auditorium that we
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
With Tina Smith.
Correct.
Senator Smith, yeah.
Yeah, I know, that seems
It seems pretty steep.
Yeah.
It's a pretty high price.
So are you saying you just go with the Transportation Alliance?
And I would try to figure out how we could get hooked up one-on-one somehow, Chris, some way, without an additional eleven thousand dollar expense or nine thousand, whatever it is.
Twenty-three hours times four hundred is ninety-two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I think, uh,
That's a steep price.
That's pretty steep, and I think we can utilize Church to get us a few of those meetings.
There's a couple of other people we could really utilize too, probably.
Okay, um, very good. I, I hear that we should go ahead and register, uh, for the event through Transportation Alliance and arrange travel to get there.
That is a board meeting day too, right?
Yes. It, it is, that's right. Good point, yeah. The sixteenth is a board meeting day. It's a Tuesday, so.
So that means
You're gonna be gone?
Potentially two of us.
I will be gone. That is correct.
We'll still have a quorum, but maybe we'd have a very light agenda that day.
Yeah, there was a, a schedule of events here. We could look at the timeline for Tuesday, and maybe we schedule flights to happen after the board meeting or so.
Yeah, but usually you don't have your agenda until
Well, that would be the thing. I mean, do we just eliminate Tuesdays, any possible meetings on Tuesday? Or do we give them the opportunity to say, well, if you can get some meetings for us on Tuesday, take it?
I think if you're going, you gotta go.
You gotta go.
Gotta go.
And you gotta, you gotta, they're already hard to get in the three days, let alone two days.
Correct.
Yeah.
We'll just deal with the three or whatever.
And if we have to, we'll move the board meeting to the next week.
Yeah.
You can't, sure.
Something big would come up.
Yeah.
Right.
We'll just keep a light agenda.
You got that?
Sure.
Preferably no public meetings or building stuff.
Keep Pete out of here, we'll be good.
No guarantee.
And do you, usually in the past, have you sent one or two commissioners up there?
The first time we sent two, and then we went one, one after that.
And the reason we went one, one is because Commissioner Gopinski usually goes with the
APO.
Before that, he hasn't, so that's why. And the initial meeting was Jared and I, and then after that, it was one.
One, yeah. And we kind of made a pact with the APO now, because now Sherburne's sending one too, so
Right.
We're sending, we're sending, um, three commissioners, Stearns, Batten, and Sherburne, and the St. Cloud mayor's coming.
From APO.
From APO, and we're targeting central Minnesota as a, as a whole.
Sure.
So you'll be out there at the same time, Scott?
No.
No.
No?
About a month and a half later.
Okay.
Which is good. We're hitting at different parts.
Okay.
And then Ed is gonna be out there too, for a different
For a different
Different thing.
So just about the point, they start to forget about Benton County. Commissioner Gopinski's gonna be there to remind them, right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, it seems like we got a consensus, uh,
Okay.
We'll work on that.
Then we'll take earlier flights out if we can and
Sure. Beth, we'll, we'll talk later about, okay. All right. Well, let's still keep talking about Mayhew Lake Road. In light of that we don't have funding for any kind of construction, uh, on Mayhew Lake Road in Stock Rapids, and certainly nothing for, identified for any roundabouts specifically at the intersections, that is still a concern with the school entrance. So just recently, uh, the school district sent, um, us a letter requesting a traffic control change at that Water Tower Road. Something we talked about, uh, briefly on our road tour recently. Um, they seem to think, and I, I tend to agree, that a ride-in and ride-out only condition at that Water Tower Road would improve, uh, safety. Um, they're really concerned about their construction traffic, uh, moving in and out and not being able to control, um, contractors and subcontractors from using appropriate entrances. At the same time, students are entering and exit. Uh, so what can we do for intersection safety? This is that intersection in aerial view. Um, a, a ride-in and ride-out would eliminate left turns and potential conflict points when you get somebody trying to make a left turn into the intersection, the same time somebody wants to make a left turn out, so. The way this could be accomplished is we use, uh, channelizing devices known as tubular markers. Here's an example in our county to the west that they had one on a, uh,
It's in St. Joe.
This is in St. Joe. So, uh, they did something very similar because they had a lot of issues with left turns, uh, in and out of that intersection, so. The secret is, they are flexible, but it does seem to discourage people from trying to drive across those. They should flex out of your way. So from a, from a public safety standpoint, it's not a fixed object. It's in the roadway that could damage or injure somebody, but it should discourage, um, left turn movement. So I think this is something that we could order the materials and install with, like, maintenance staff if, uh, the board agrees or directs me to do that. I would recommend we do about seventy-five feet on either side of the intersection. Um, those sticks, as I call them, they could be about fifty dollars apiece.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry. I, I have a very big concern on this, to be quite honest with you. With that roundabout, we're gonna be constructing on twenty-nine. We're gonna be funneling people right into that. And, and arguably, that intersection is the most dangerous intersection out of all of them already. And we're gonna be funneling all school traffic to that intersection.
To the
Twenty-nine intersection, right in, right out.
Well, what's interesting is, yeah, once school gets out next year, we're gonna close that intersection to the north. So you should essentially see no traffic from the north coming on Mayhew Lake Road, just the few residences that live on there. Uh, you do have a point. The school seems to think that their construction will start before the end of school next spring, and that's when their concern is, is, you know, we're talking about two months, maybe April and May, that traffic. Once we have our roundabout constructed at the end of twenty-six, uh, making a right turn on Water Tower Road and going north to twenty-nine.
Be no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Agree, so. We really are talking for a two-month timeframe. The school district, when, in our discussions about this, they seem to see some benefit to going ahead and installing those this fall, though, to get the traffic used to this before they have the construction traffic.
But then they, then we end up shutting it down for a year. Or for, for, you know, four or five months, yeah.
Yeah. We, our intentions is the Monday after school is done, we close that intersection down, and we have it open before Labor Day next summer.
Okay.
It's possible, um, but, um.
Is Excel on board with that?
Well, Excel, they're starting work now. They should be clear still in September.
You know, so, so the question I have is that they want it as soon as possible, and yet through the winter months. And who's gonna plow that road? We do. So are we gonna always be replacing them? Because we will be hitting them. And they're just glued, they're just sticked on, correct, Chris?
Yeah, that's one of the options. You can use like a, like crack filler.
But, but still, but still, when they get hit with the plow, they're coming out.
They, they most likely will. Um, I talked to Stearns County about that. You know, some of them would get knocked out. Some of them, they would just do pre-treatment to melt the snow before it accumulated there. And that was something I talked about with this school, was like, what if we decide to just remove them for the winter months?
How about we put them in right before they start?
In April, you mean?
In April.
In April, yeah, for that two-month period.
School's telling him they'd like to train the people before they get to that point.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but who's gonna, who's gonna incur those costs, okay, in the wintertime?
The school isn't.
No, it's gonna be on us again.
Well, not only that, has had somebody had a discussion on emergency, because that came up.
It's using that water tower.
Yeah.
Those are drive-over poles.
Yeah, you can drive over them.
They can drive over them, the fire trucks, and that can drive over them. They're plastic, and they just
That would, that's why I'm recommending this kind of system as opposed to anything more, more permanent-like, and, um, fire trucks should be able to push those out of the way as they drive across.
What's, what, what's Mark Ebner gonna say? I mean, seriously?
Is the school district interested in putting pre-melt down on that?
I mean, I, I'm sorry, just voice in my opinion. Just voice in my opinion, Chris.
Seventy-five bucks and how many?
The ones, the ones where you, on the photo, they've been there for a couple of years, I believe.
Yeah, tha- that's the other big secret. Stearns County did something very similar temporarily. Just right now, they're constructing a roundabout at this intersection with the McDonald's and the Coburns behind you. But their temporary was like seven years.
Yeah.
Until they got money, funding lined up for this intersection.
Well, they just shut it down this summer, though, this spring.
How many poles are you talking?
So, I mean, uh, a hundred fifty feet, uh, spaced about, no wider than probably five feet apart. You get wider than that, cars may see an opportunity to try to squeeze between a couple of them, so.
So
We're talking thirty to thirty-one of these.
Thinking ahead, how would this look on our raise grant if we went ahead and did something makeshift like this to try and fix it? They'd be like, oh, they're trying to do something. We know that there's a problem, rather than sitting, sitting there waiting. Good point, great point.
You know, maybe it might help our raise grant, and then say, we know that there's a problem. We gotta do something. People are getting hurt.
Yeah.
So on that side of things, it might actually help us get some of that money because we know there's an issue.
Yeah. That, I, I think that's a consideration, yeah. We're trying temporary solutions, and knowing that they're just temporary, not permanent, um, yeah. It is an additional cost, bec- but in
In the scheme of things, it's not much.
No. I, I put on the agenda item, I'm estimating, you know, ba- maybe five thousand, fifteen hundred dollars for materials, maybe. Then you got traffic control and the time to put them out there, install them out there on the road.
I'm sure they got that in the referendum, don't they? Or no?
That's less than their contingency, right? I'm kidding.
Well, that and we're not factoring in the fact of pre-treating or the plowing onto what he's already got to.
To do, yeah.
I'm just, I'm worried about, when you take a right out of there, people are gonna try and get sneaky and do U-turns somewhere along the way to cut get, that's what I'm, I'm concerned about.
So that hill.
Yeah. Somebody, somebody's gonna, and they're, or they're gonna go into a driveway, back out into traffic, and there's gonna be accidents. Mark my words, that's
Well, and just to make a comment to that, and I'm sure Ed can contest to this because he lives up in that area, but when y- you come out of where I used to work, which is Performance, you used to be able to go straight across the highway right there. And now, i- i- in order to, to, you have to go right, or you have to cross over and go left, you can no longer go across. I, I, I can't count on my hands, my toes, anything. How many times I've seen people go, bup, 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 bup?
Really?
Uh, I, I mean, they drive straight across anyways, so I get your point that they're gonna go up far enough to where they can make a U-turn and come back. And then you're gonna have somebody not watching, there's gonna be another
But that'll actually go better for us in the raise grant.
It, it will, you know, I, I, I do believe
You just hope.
I do believe we have to do something. I'm, I do believe we have to do something, and this is the less, basically the less expense to do it temporarily.
I, I do believe that we should get our emergency management in that area on board and let, and maybe I can help you with, uh, with, uh, Chief Fleming and either, uh, Perry or, or Bukowski, yeah. But once they're on board, I would, I would have no problem, because I do believe that if we show the government we're trying to do something because we know it, we're not sitting back in our hands waiting for them to do something. We did it three times. Now we gotta do something.
And, and that's, that's my concern. I mean, we, I, I presume this was discussed at a, a public board meeting of this school district. You know, there's a request from another agency to do something. Um, what does that look like on us if we just ignore these concerns brought up by other agencies? A- a- and this solution, I mean, this is easily expandable. If we get to a point where seventy-five feet isn't far enough, we have issues, will we buy a few more and stick a few more out there and see if that corrects it? I, I, I think, I like, what I like about it is addresses that we're, we're acknowledging that a larger solution is needed here. We don't have the funds to do that. We're trying to do low-cost, high-value improvements in the interim, um, knowing that it's not the end-all, be-all solution.
So, Chris, will you go back, like, into the parking lot there where they, parking lot after school? And you will, you will say that there's, you know, no left-hand turn ahead?
Yeah, we'll have to put in some signings.
Because you, I mean, you see them lined up there for, holy cow.
You'd probably have to have two signages.
Yeah.
One at the intersection and one, one, you know, another mile down or a half mile around the curve.
Right there's where I see the U-turns.
Yeah.
Right, right, go, go right, right there. Yep. There are two driveways almost right. They're gonna be doing U-turns there all the time.
And that's why it's backing up, is people waiting to make a left turn. You're not finding a gap in both directions to be able to pull out there. And that's why it's backing up, is people waiting to make a left turn. You're not finding a gap in both directions to be able to pull out there, so.
Chris, to your point about a public meeting, is the letter that you received from the district something you can submit with a raise grant?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I think any kind of grant application going forward, this is good documentation. To show that they're.
Plus meeting minutes are nice.
Other elected bodies requesting here.
I have one more question. Is it possible for the school district to share this cost?
That's funny.
Just asking.
I can hear it already. It's your county road.
I'm gonna say they won't even put in the signs that says no left turn.
I would probably have to agree with Commissioner Kapinski.
There's your answer.
They're making the request.
Yeah, I.
It's our road.
It's one thing.
I, it seems logical. I get what you're saying. I'm not discounting it.
So, is there consensus to, or direction to me to to pursue this and?
Can we, can we say the consensus at this point not to exceed the five grand?
And then I I do believe that we gotta make sure that Chief Fleming, Chief Byzy, and them guys. They know about it, and they're on board, and the reason we're going with these knockover ones is so that they can still utilize it if they have to.
Sure, in an emergency, just drive over them. If they get knocked out or something, we'll replace them, but yeah.
Ebner been in on this discussion?
Yes, yes, we've discussed this as a management team in the department, yeah.
Good question. Yep, I'm good.
All right.
I understand.
Will you adjourn?
Somebody's sitting over there itching to set cows.
I don't have time for cows.
Oh, I've got a stack of cows.
Have to go through committees.
I've got a stack of cows.
Is that all you had, Chris?
That is.
Motion to adjourn. Don't look at me like that, Monty.
Committee meeting, seriously, you don't want?
No, we don't.
Send them to me.
Next meeting, you're gonna have four pages.
Set committee of the whole.
All right. You're invited to the ground groundbreaking of the Avivo Shelter. September twenty-sixth at ten-thirty, and I'm sorry, I don't have a specific address. We'll get that for you again. That's September twenty-sixth, ten-thirty, the Avivo groundbreaking. For the shelter.
It's on a Friday.
You're invited to the foster care appreciation picnic, August twelfth from five to seven. At.
New Life.
New Life Church. That's August twelfth, five to seven, New Line Church, excuse me, New Life Church, excuse me. Foster care appreciation picnic. Okay, so Ms. Chair, we also need two things. We need to set the budget work session committee of the whole. You know, you have that big committee of the whole where you make some decisions, or at least reach some consensus on the budget. It's good to get that on the calendar. Typically, that happens late August, early September. Is is the timeframe generally? So, you know.
Late August is better for me.
Excuse me?
Late August is better for me.
One consideration, if I may, is as I intend to be in Kansas the the last week of August.
Can we do that before our conjunction with our county board meeting on the second of September?
After.
Yeah, after.
Could do it after. I think by that time, we kind of know.
September second, sure, yeah, that that would work, yeah, yeah. So upon conclusion of county board. You know, this year, you're not gonna see a lot of policy issues. There's not. You know, you got some requests from outside agencies. I think there's two or three policy issue requests, so not a lot to to go through. So upon conclusion of county board on the September second, your budget work session. So, secondly, within. The current, the current calendar has us adopting proposed budget levy the second meeting in September, which is September sixteenth. And I need to ask, does that still work?
No, because.
I will be gone.
You'll be gone.
Okay, so what we need to do then is is set a special meeting date to adopt the proposed budget levy by September thirtieth.
Okay, may I ask you this? May, do we just wanna consider changing that board meeting to the twenty-third now and being done with it?
So just entirely move the sixteenth meeting to the twenty-third, sure.
I'm just throwing it out as a.
Just one more, one.
On the twenty-third?
Sure.
It's booyah that day.
That's booyah day.
Booyah day. But then we could do both. I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
We just won't be able to help with the booyah. That's okay.
So what's the call? You wanna have a special meeting on the twenty-third? Or move the entire board being that would ordinarily be on the sixteenth to the twenty-third?
Move the whole meeting and really try and keep it light.
Yeah, just one small consideration. It becomes a special meeting, which means you can amend the agenda. So we gotta make sure we we've got everything we want, we need on that agenda. You cannot amend it then.
You need to, you need to make sure, right?
Yes, sir.
Just as a.
Yes, sir.
Yep, it it'll be a motion to. Do the meeting and then a motion to adjourn.
So, so just to recap, special cow on budget September second, and then. The re, the board being from the sixteenth is now moved to the twenty-third, and that's gonna be adoption of proposed budget levy on twenty-third, okay? That's all we have, Mr. Chair.
Move for approval of cows.
I have one, one question. There was, I have on my calendar, I think it's the Monday, the eleventh, a cow. Do, do we know what that's for? And did we decide on a cow on the eleventh?
Of September, that's, well, that's.
You're talking about August eleventh, Commissioner Benoit.
Yes, we have a ditch, we have a ditch cow on nine AM, August eleventh, yes. Yes.
I couldn't recall if that was actually got set at a public meeting. I know we talked about it at our last.
It's eight thirty.
And it's eight thirty.
I'm sorry, eight thirty, yes, eight thirty. Is that, is that still needed, Chris?
Yes, this is in preparation of our public meeting on the nineteenth.
Right, because you wanna prep for the being at the school, right, yeah, got it. That is all we have. Was there a motion seconded and approved?
I move to accept the cows.
I'll second it.
All in favor?